Good evening, meeting call to order is now six thirty-nine P M. Town council meeting, the town council chambers, eleven seventy, Main Street, West Fork, Rhode Island.
Roll call, Councilman Dennison.
Here.
Councilman Lichardi.
Here.
Councilman Messier.
Here.
Council Vice President Williamson.
Here.
Council President Goslin.
Here.
Forum is declared.
And just for the record, just please make sure you speak into your mics, I have another text message saying they can't hear us, so, thank you.
Consent agenda, approval of the minutes from the September third, twenty twenty-four, town council meeting.
Move the consent agenda.
Second. Moving second, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it.
Ordinances, second reading of ordinance twenty twenty-four dash fifteen, amending Article seven Tobacco Dealer's License, Sales and Sales Regulations.
Move the ordinance.
Second.
Moving second, now.
Just put our ordinance into compliance with the state, increasing the minimum age from eighteen to twenty-one, and also changing the licensing from the council licensing to a clerk permitting based on the case that was handed down.
Any questions for Al? Any public comment on the tobacco ordinance? Hearing none, I'll take a roll call vote. Jay?
Yes.
Jason?
Yes.
Mark?
Yes.
Mary Beth?
Yes.
And I voted no last time because of the, not because of the age of twenty-one, because I wanted it in the council's control, and that's what all the students were working for, but unfortunately, state law does supersede town law, so I will vote yes.
Yeah, I voted no.
In addition, on that point, that I mentioned, working with those students, they were looking for eighteen, I'm sure they're happier with the twenty-one than the eighteen, but again, they were an incredible group of young people.
Yeah, and the only, when I brought that up, I know it was only three of us here, but there was the aspect of keeping it in the town's realm because of stuff on counters, tobacco, the vapes and all that were being on the front counter, we had control of that, but by state law, they can change those laws on them.
That was a superior judge that did that. She shot down, I just want to say the town of Portsmouth had the idea, Portsmouth copied our ordinance, and she shot it down.
Thank you, Al.
Second reading of ordinance twenty twenty-four dash seventeen, authorizing the town of West Fork to finance the acquisition of public safety, public works, and recreation vehicles and equipment by the issuance of not more than two million five hundred thousand general obligation bonds and or notes therefore.
Move the ordinance.
Second.
Moving second, who wants to speak on this, Mark?
This, if you recall, this was a change, we originally had approved a lease for town vehicles, however, one of the regulations that with the grant funds for the ladder truck, we decided to switch, and we decided to go to bond, actually, the rates are a little better than the lease, so this is the second reading of that change.
Any questions for Mark? Any public comment on this ordinance? Hearing none, roll call, Jay?
Yes.
Jason?
Yes.
Mark?
Yes.
Mary Beth?
Yes.
And I vote yes.
Business licenses, request from Unforgettable Events Party Hall for an amplifier loudspeaker and theatrical performance shows and exhibitions license for premises located seventeen forty-five Main Street, Unit Five.
Move the request.
Second, moving second, ask this to be on here as a single item, that's why we didn't do the whole item, so this came before us last year for a license for business, and are you the owner of the business?
Yes, I am.
Okay, and just one second, I'll have you state your name and address. As of right now, they were never really approved to open up, and I guess they were operating, so, and they're before us tonight for a theatrical amplifier loudspeaker theatrical performance license, and some of the concerns, I know the building official can talk on it, the fire marshal, was, this was brought before them as an event coordinator, and the building is actually being used for those events, which was not stated or brought to our attention last time, so if you want, you could just state your name and address for the record and let us know what you're doing there and what's going on.
Tanis Hall, one fifty-eight Washington Road, Barrington, Rhode Island, so this is my first business, I never had a business before, so I wasn't aware that I couldn't like, that all this had to happen, like I didn't know that I have to wait to be approved to open, I thought that I could open the business, and, because when I had the fire inspection, there was a few things that needed to be done, and I thought I could operate the business until those things were ready, so we could go up again and do that, so I was unaware of that, and I had-
Are you serving alcohol at this?
No.
Has alcohol been on site?
So there was an event that I had gave for free, her daughter passed away last year, and she didn't have, she was fifteen, so I wanted to give her mom, gift her mom sixteenth birthday party for her, just to celebrate her life, these people went there, I make it clear to everyone, there's no alcohol, nothing on the premises inside my building, there's a liquor store in the plaza, and even when I arrived, when all this was happening, the westward cop that I was talking to, he was like, they're not even supposed to be open right now, so they stayed open, serving these people, they didn't bring it inside my building, of my understanding, I heard that they was out in the parking lot, but, like, I mean, when I arrived, it was-
Underage or?
No, no, of age, like, there was adults, so when I arrived, I, when I arrived, like, the whole parking lot was full, and I was yelling at everybody, like, you guys have to go, like, this is shut down, I contacted, though the mom contacted me the next day apologizing, saying, it was, she knows that there anything she could do, it was out of her control, or whatever situation is, but here I am, stuck now with just everything, and I, like, this is my first time ever opening a business, so-
So what do you do, like, what is the business?
I'm an event planner, I do birthday parties, baby showers, and like wedding receptions.
Out of your building?
Yes, so I give amazing deals, like, I, you know, I like to work with people with prices and stuff like that, so I've been doing this for three years now, but I've been doing it at different halls, and I'm a stay-at-home mom, I have seven kids, I wanted to, like, you know, open up my own business, see what, see if I could generate the money, because a lot of my customers would be like, oh, do you have a hall, and I didn't have a hall at the time, and so that's why that came up to my head, like, I should open a hall, but when I, when the fire department first came, I, the name of my event is unforgettable events party hall, it's right there, I said it was gonna be a party hall, but I don't know if it got misconstrued, or what the situation is, but that's been my name, it says it, party hall in my name.
So, is it all set to go?
As of right now, I'm not sure. Chief?
Hi, Jeffrey Vron, fire chief, and we want you to succeed, we want to work with you, okay, but when we go out and do an inspection, the type of occupancy that it's going to be in a building changes, and it changes how we look at what that structure is, if we go in, we think if it's an office building, there are certain codes, if we think it's going to be a place of assembly where parties and things are going to go on, it brings in different codes for that, and as that, with a theatrical license, that triggers even more things, such as like the DJ or something like that, the music, if the fire alarm goes off, the music has to go down, and the lights have to come on, and the building isn't designed for that right now, so those are things that you would have to do, in order to have a theatrical license and be able to do that, so, yep.
So, one of the fire marshals called me this morning, I've been doing everything that they said that I have to do to get this, everything legit, and I've been doing everything, so he told me this morning that the music relay shutdown is not required in my building because the capacity is not over one fifty, the capacity is one fourteen, so they said that that's not required anymore, they did have it on my list, and he called me this morning and said that it's no longer required.
He did not know you were going for a theatrical license?
Okay, I mean, I just feel like I'm jumping-
Are you looking for, are you?
Yeah, because I just, I'm so confused, like, it's like I'm doing lots of-
Understandable, it is your new business, and listen, not everybody knows the rules, and I get that, I understand that, but I think we need to clarify what's going on there, because I've gotten different reports just in twenty-four hours, and, you know, and I think the chief, the chief police is standing up for this situation, is that what you're?
So I think this matter was brought to our attention back on August twenty-fourth, we received two different calls in dispatch about a just large group of disorderly people out in front of this hall, smoking marijuana, drinking, hanging out in front of the businesses, and a second call, several individuals in the parking lot acting disorderly, hanging out of their vehicles, so we responded- Is that night or during the day? Ten o'clock at night. So we responded, the officers that arrived observed the parking lot to be near capacity, now, it's a big parking lot, but quickly fills up, once the officers located the business, there was approximately a hundred and fifty individuals inside the building, due to the large crowd that really weren't very cooperative with the police showing up, our officers called for assistance from Coventry Police, Warwick Police, and Rhode Island State Police, who all sent police officers to back our officers up, the officers asked if there was a manager or an employee on premises, and there were, there was nobody on premises that actually worked there, or was a representative of the hall, again, we were waiting for other police departments to come and back us up, the officers went outside to gauge the situation, at which time, somebody inside shut the front door and locked it, and would not let the officers back in, so at that time, we contacted the fire department to force entry, we were going in the building, while we were waiting for the fire department to show up, somebody unknowingly opened the front door, and our officers obviously grabbed it, we made entry, inside, they saw open bottles of assorted liquor throughout the hall, large bouquets, a photo machine, balloons, and small tables, you know, so we had to wait for other assistance to clear the hall out, so that was our first knowledge of what was going on there, we did speak with Ms. Hall, who did arrive, and she wasn't, allegedly, she was not aware of the type of environment that was going to be, how many people were going to be there, although she did admit that she knew it was going to be a large event, but that was our first call to this event hall.
Is that the same party you were talking about? Well, I think, I think Chief Verone said it best, that I think you need to sit down with the building official, the fire marshal, and the police department, and discover what's going on there, and get everything you need to run your business, and hopefully, we're not running raves out of there of a hundred and fifty to two hundred people.
No.
This is a lot different than a birthday party or a baby shower, with someone, if you're not there, obviously had to have keys to get into the building.
So, moving forward, like, I told, I spoke to the fire marshal, I told him that I'm gonna hire security now to be there, I didn't have that in place before.
What do you plan on doing, though, if you're hiring security?
Like, so-
On a baby shower or a birthday party?
No, like, not like, someone to oversee that things are not getting out of control, you get what I mean, like, I just don't want people to-
I don't, I've been doing this all my life, so if I book an event, I know, onsite, either I'm onsite, or I know somebody who is onsite that I can trust with a key.
Yes, that's what I'm saying, that's what I'm gonna have.
And they have the booking in front of them, so I would never have to worry that somebody's gonna come there at ten o'clock at night with an open container, or doing drugs, or doing something that they shouldn't be doing.
Yes, so that's what I mean, I probably stand it wrong.
So what is your intent, though, is my question?
Meaning, like, what do I intend on doing?
Like, what are you intending to use the biz, the property for, though?
For an event hall.
What kind of event, though? Because I think that's what we're gonna, that's what I'm going to see it into.
So I do, I do different events, it's not always, like, I do a lot of birthday parties, like, first birthday parties, like, kids' parties, I do baby showers, I hardly do adult parties, like, like the sixteen-year-old, I hardly do ages like that, it's mainly baby showers and kids' birthday parties is what I mainly do there.
So why would you need security?
I don't want this problem happening again, I'm just, I'm nervous now, I don't want, it's probably not security that I'm probably just saying security, but it's not like security, security, just someone to oversee, like, you said, have-
Business manager.
Yeah, yes, I'm not good with my words, I'm sorry.
No, it's all right, and I'm not trying to grill you, I'm just, this is a pretty big incident that occurred, you know, as of what the chief was saying, when you have four other towns involved, the state police, you know, when you're saying that you're running kids' baby showers, it's kind of a little different.
And I'm sure, and just correct me if I'm wrong, Joe, I know you're still back there, but crowd control would have to also be-
Yes, crowd management, yeah, I have to do that.
Have to be certified, they have to be certified.
Yes.
Thank you.
Yes.
Thank you, so, all right, I don't know what the council's pleasure is here, I think we should wait till we know what's going on, and-
It's like we did with the, the same thing that we did with the other event that came before us, is let the chief, let the fire chief do his thing first.
Yeah, so just to clarify, so they're not operational until that happens, is that correct, I just want to be on the same page.
I would, yes.
So, so, I mean, you guys, I mean, I'm sure you're gonna make plans with the chief right now to plan something to talk, so we can probably put this on the next council agenda to bring it back before us, and see what game plan you guys came up to make sure everybody's on the same page.
Okay.
Our next meeting's October first.
October first, okay, thank you.
No, we're still on the license, if you want to speak, yes.
Michael Kissalika, seventeen fifty-five Main Street and seventeen fifty-nine Main Street, if the, well, when they operate the business, as they have been from time to time, and they operated with the back door open, probably for ventilation, I'm guessing, the loud sound from the amplified music when it leaves the building, the first property it hits is seventeen fifty-five Main Street, just so you have the logistics in mind, I came here to talk about the noise, and the fact that this building was never designed or intended to be used for this kind of purpose, it isn't built for this kind of purpose, they need to be operating this business so that the sound stays within it, nobody's addressed that yet, this building is not soundproof, in the past, this landlord, not at this unit, but in another unit, had an under twenty-one club there, and the chief may want to take a look at the records from what happened when that club was operating late at night, they were at the parking lot an awful lot of times, but the sound is not staying within the four walls of this business, it's traveling past seventeen fifty-five, over to seventeen fifty-nine, across a cove, and down the river, it's a very loud thing, but the other thing I wanted to-
I'm sorry, go ahead. I'm just trying to get a picture, is this during the day?
This is at night, so, this is at nighttime when the amplified events have been taking place, I think during the day, we really don't know that she's there.
Is there only been the one event, I'm just, just to clarify, because you mentioned the one.
There was, there was, I'm aware of another one in June.
So, I know why they was hearing the music, because the people had my door wide open with the rock holding it, so that's why the music was, they was hearing outside, I don't know why would they do that, and that's why now we have to have crowd management and all that stuff there.
I think these are all things that, once we come back here, we'll have, the council will have to take these things into account, whether it's the music, whether the hours need to be adjusted again, I think it's putting the car ahead of the horse, I think before, we need to, we made to make sure that all the safety protocols, but I definitely hear you and understand you, I think that, and if you want to come back to the next meeting, you're more than welcome, I just think, at this point, we need to make sure they're operating safely before we get to that point.
How do I get notice of the next meeting?
We're telling, it's gonna be, it's gonna be October first, we're gonna have it on the next agenda, yes, same exact time, two weeks from, two weeks from today, I believe.
That's assuming that we, there's enough time.
Assuming that the fire and building have everything rectified.
Should I check with the-
You can check, you can check with it, you absolutely can do that, yeah, or the Secretary of State's office has the record of all the town council meetings across the state, it'll have the agenda, and it'll say if it's on there as well, it's also, there's a link right on the front of the town website as well, but you can absolutely call the town clerk.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
So at this point, you have no events planned for the next two weeks, I assume?
Not at, I did, but not at the hall, I haven't operated the hall ever since that party, so I've been having to spend money to find halls for other people, because, I just, I feel like, honestly, I feel like I'm being attacked, to be honest, not by you guys, but it's the honest truth, I feel like I've been doing everything I'm supposed to do, you know, I'm bleeding, I'm bleeding money, I'm still having to pay rent, I'm still having to do all these things, and I just feel like, I'm just, everyone's against me, and it's not right.
Well, let's give it two weeks to meet with all the proper officials, and we can go from there.
Thank you.
Have a good night, thank you.
Can we, can we separate three from the rest of these, number three? I gotta recuse myself from three, but-
Sure, absolutely, so-
You want to do the other ones first, and then?
Do you want to move approval of two, four, five, six?
I'll move the approval of business licenses two through seven, but omitting number three.
Second.
Moving second, any discussion? Any public discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it?
Excuse myself.
Just need a motion for number three.
Move approval of number three?
Second.
Moving second, any discussion? Any public discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it?
Appointments and resignations, resignation of Robert Flurry from the Patuxet River Authority.
Move the resignation.
Second.
Moving second, any discussion? Sarah, if we could just give Mr. Flurry a thank you letter for his service? Any other comments? He didn't give any reasons or anything, he just said, as of September ninth, so. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it?
New business, approval of the collective bargaining agreement.
Trying to take no action on number one?
Okay, discussion, action, homeless encampments.
Mark, this is a follow-up from the previous agenda?
Sure, so, as the president just mentioned, I put this on the agenda for the last meeting, we had what I think was a somewhat productive discussion about it, we didn't take any action during that last meeting, because we were missing two of our five council members, and I-
Mark, actually, can I stop you for one sec? Why don't we just do, we do this last, and then I can open up this to public comment also, because I think that's what majority are here for.
Yep, yep.
So if we can skip to number three, school committee update?
School building committee.
School building committee, I'm sorry, school building.
So, we'll keep it brief, I just wanted to, I send out a code red, and there's been some other information that's been disseminated, but tomorrow evening, from six to seven P M., the school building committee and our partners will be hosting our community conversation number one, which will be presenting the, or our architects and planners will be presenting the existing conditions, what our schools are like now, which is the foundation for moving forward with a plan on what our school facilities need, whether it be rehabilitation, new build, or whatever, eventually moving that, so this is our first, what I consider thorough public engagement, where presentations will be made, and questions can be asked and answered, so we welcome everybody who is interested in that to go to West Walk High School Auditorium tomorrow night from six to seven.
Any questions for Mark on that? Thank you, Mark.
Request from Narragansett Electric for pole installation on Paramount Street.
Move the resolution.
Second.
Moving second, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it? We're going back to two.
Are we gonna read the appointments first, or?
No, we can read that later.
Okay, okay.
So, we're gonna go back to two, discussion, action, homeless encampments, the council gonna have their discussion, I know a lot of people are gonna have some comments and concerns or questions, so I will open up public comment to this item, please stick to that item until we're done with this item, don't come up in the middle and say, I want to talk about a streetlight on Factory Street, because I want to stick to one subject at a time. Mark, this was your item from the last council agenda?
Sure, thank you, as I was saying just a minute ago, this is an item that we had on the last agenda, we were missing some of our council members, and we all felt it would be in everybody's best interest to have the full council here to discuss this entire topic, and then perhaps take action on it, so, you know, I'm just gonna reiterate what I said last time, and then maybe throw a few new things in there, but everybody here has a home, and I like to think of our town as our collective home, when there's an issue at home, whether it be of physical nature, or something that's eating away at the fabric of your home, you must address it, if you don't address it, the problem will never go away, and it will just increase over time, and as I mentioned in the last meeting, I think our town has a big issue that's eating away at the fabric of the town, and that's the homeless encampments, I want to make it clear, and I'll speak for myself, that I am a person with compassion, what we've witnessed over the last weeks, months, and even years, is a group of people who are very disrespectful to town property, they create a large safety concern, not only for residents, but for our police and fire personnel, and even themselves, last time, I read off a list of incidents that our police and fire had to respond to since the beginning of June, and it was quite extensive, those folks are being put in danger every time they go down to one of the encampments, people at the encampments, and I'm not gonna try to cast a wide net here, but within the encampments, we know we have people who are addicted to drugs, and have sexual offenses on their record, the concerning part about this, because everybody has their own issues, but the concerning part about this to me, is that most of these encampments tend to be popping up around playgrounds, schools, and parks, and those are the places where our children and families are spending a lot of their time, or would like to spend a lot of their time, now, keep in mind, the way I look at this is that we, we have taxpayers who, we ask every year, hopefully, it's not a large increase, but we tend to increase taxes on people year after year, and we ask them to pay that, and in return, we give them services such as police, fire, education for the youth of the town, and all those sorts of things that, and hopefully, in return, we can give them a town that they can take pride in, I think we're at a place now where that's in question, and a lot of it has to do with the encampments, I get calls and emails almost daily about another situation involving the homeless encampments, and none of it is good, I'm sure police and fire would have many more stories to tell, you know, we had, we had a situation off New London Ave last year into this year at Flat Top Park, the town put a lot of money into Flat Top Park, I raised concerns earlier this year, and we were looking to have the homeless encampment removed, luckily, some of the advocates went down there and spoke to the people that called that home, and they decided it was in their best interest, and they saw where we were coming from, and they left the encampment, Friday, I found myself in that part of town, so I stopped by, and the homeless encampment is back in business, I saw it with my own eyes, I took a walk down the path, and sure enough, there it was, the thing that really upset me was on the way back to my car in the parking lot, I found evidence of drug use, I have a picture of it on my phone, keep in mind, this is a park where children are spending a good amount of time, last time, we had an issue, last meeting, we were discussing an issue at Horgan Elementary, I could go on and on and on about these individual encampments and what happens, but the fact of the matter is, that the folks that are living in these encampments are not good neighbors, I can say that with all the confidence, because if you look at these encampments, where you find drug paraphernalia, you find trash, you find human feces, they are using these encampments and town property as their personal dumpsters, and that is not what our taxpayers are paying for, what we are allowing right now- What we are allowing right now is for the few, anywhere estimated between forty to sixty to maybe a hundred, we're allowing the few to tear away at the fabric of this town of more than twenty-eight thousand. We are catering to the few. These folks have been given um, opportunities for help, which they have rejected, for whatever reason. That's their decision. The state, the town have offered services. Other organizations in town have offered services. They choose not to use them. So, tonight, I am looking to take action on this issue. And before I go through with any kind of motion, obviously, it's a town council meeting. Fellow members have, um, some time they'd like to discuss this, that'd be great. Obviously, public comment is welcome, um, but the fact of the matter is, this problem has been going on for a long time and we have never taken action on it and we expect it to go away. It's not going to go away. It's only going to get worse. So, council president, that's what I have for now. Um, I don't know if you wanna open it up to the other members?
Yep. Any other, anybody else from the council have any questions, concerns, comments? Before I open it up to the public?
I think I wanna hear input first. I, I, I actually, I'm not sure all people have been offered services. But that's information you have that I don't have. So, if I can hear some of that stuff, that, um, these are people that some of them do wanna be out, living where they are. I don't believe based on the work that over the last, and Mark sent us, um, some information this afternoon based on a meeting that happened last Monday. And I don't know if you wanna talk about that a little bit before.
Certainly. I, I thought it was important and I understand, I, I hear the frustrations and, and the issues, um, that have come up. You know, this, the homelessness issue is something that the town's been a partner in working towards solutions with a variety of, of state agencies and community partners. And, you know, in all honesty, it's a frustratingly slow to at some points stalled efforts. Um, and that's frustrating. Um, obviously, the, uh, side effect of that is some of the encampments and the many things that have been brought up that are adversely affecting um, other populations and, and that homeless population itself. Um, so based on the, th- those efforts continue and will continue. But based upon the recent discussions and, and things that are highlighted a- at the council level over the past few meetings, I started to shift and prepare for if there is a legislative directive to go the next step. And I, I think I, I've been open at least with council and, and internal meetings on, you know, where I think our role is and the hiccups that I think are, that we are currently exposed to, that would be obstacles to doing that. So in preparation of trying to resolve those and have a solid plan, um, should, you know, and a directive come to move or whatever that directive is regarding encampments, I wanna make sure that our staff and our community puts its best foot forward and that I think would obviously need to continue with our social service efforts, um, and try to keep that going. That should be nonstop, but I think there's a flaw or flaws in our ordinances that would empower us to constitutionally move people, um, and potentially enforce, whether it's a municipal ordinance or a state law and everything that comes with that. Um, so I wanna be able to put that forward. We've met, as someone had mentioned, we met internally um, last Monday and kind of brainstormed some ideas and, you know, started collecting those concerns and protocols and procedures and what side effects that any of those actions may have. That's a work in progress. I sent out a draft today on where it stands, but it, it's more of the generalities. It, eventually, it'll be in here. Um, as I mentioned, it, it kind of lays out our current conditions, conditions and situations. Uh, Chief Ferrone, um, did some overhead mapping, laying out where the different encampments are, has a spreadsheet, um, with the numbers, approximate numbers. And, and the chief's been a real leader, um, on behalf of the town to try to facilitate some answers. Uh, we've, I mentioned what our active measures and responses, responses have been to date. Um, started listing the variance ordinances and state laws and a couple examples from other communities that may need to be considered or, in my opinion, need to be amended if we wanna do anything um, on a more affirmative level. And then there's a listing of the various departments that would have some part of this program, and I think it would take some type of task force or response team of town people and some social agencies, um, once that gets triggered. Again, it would involve the police department with its navigator, our EMS and community paramedicine folks, our EMA people, Department of Public Works and Park Center Recreation. Thrive Behavioral Health has been a key partner and whatever the appropriate housing coordination folks will, will be. And there's probably multiple, um, agencies or, or groups that can, to help with that. And then I just ended, it's kind of a building supplemental information and, and resources, which will be the, the largest portion of this eventually. Just different things that have come out from, you know, federal, state, local agencies, some social service agencies um, to help give us, uh, hopefully a positive direction to act.
So, Mark, one thing I, I failed to mention, and I'm glad you, you brought this up, um, I wasn't calling for the town to dissolve the services that are provided to anybody. That's not what I'm saying here. Um, I, my speech, if you will, was more about the encampments themselves. Um, I think we still need to offer the services and you did a good job in your email outlining all of the organizations and the services that are offered. But again, maybe it's wishful thinking, but in the end, maybe somebody will take advantage of those services who currently is not. Um, if, if we engage and, and take some action on the encampments, that's my hope. Um, I don't want anybody to live in the woods, even if they want to. I don't want people living in the woods. I want people with, with housing and roofs over their heads, but if they're not going to, and again, um, there's a good chance, it's more likely than not, that there are people who, um, are just, for lack of a better word, down on their luck. And they're suffering right now. Um, I'm not gonna pretend to know all about that world, all right? But for those that are out there that do not want the help and the services, um, to go on treating our town property like it's their dumpster is unacceptable. And I think that's where I'm going to when I talk about taking action on the encampments.
I know I've been pretty patient with this. I know my ward has recently got really affected, affected by it. I'm getting calls from Phoenix to Riverpoint to Arctic. And, you know, the three, I call it the triangle right now. And residents on Fairview Avenue, they're saying people are coming off the Riverwalk at two in the morning from Cumberland Farms, throwing trash on their front lawn. I've never gotten complaints from that area before, especially Fairview Ave. The only complaint I got on Fairview Ave was speeding. Okay, I'm getting it now, sleeping down in Cumberland Farms, Little Island, even though it's Coventry. They're sleeping on the island. They're taking their trash and throwing it all over the Phoenix area. We've added these trash cans that mega picks up in different areas of the town. They're filling up quick, very quick. I'm like, wow, they're really being utilized, but they're not being, they're being overutilized by individuals that are just taking their trash and throwing it on the street and other people are picking it up and putting it in that trash. I've heard right from the advocates that go down, they're helping cleaning up and they're having to go down there and it's, it's not fair to you guys. It really isn't. But I, you know, propane tanks going missing. Electricity being used on their house e- early hours of the, or late hours of the night, early hours of the morning. Water hoses left on because they're filling up jugs and leaving the water on, so they come out. God only knows how long they're running the water. That only affects their sewer bill and their water bill. But I'm looking at something here and, Mark, thank you for the draft, but, you know, when we look at chapter twelve-five, it has playground, sports, recreation facilities, hours, hours generally, alcoholic beverages, use of ta- tobacco prohibited, uh, disorderly and indecent conduct, loitering. Twelve-ten, smoking tobacco, marijuana, cannabis in public buildings on public property in vehicles owned by the town. Seven-twenty-eight, open fires regulated. Eight-seventy-five, says definitions. Eight-seventy-six, disposal of waste prohibited. Eight-seventy-seven, disposal of waste on lands of others. Unlawful acts of littering. Eight-one-forty-one, storage of rubbish, trash, debris, and litter. Um, eleven-forty-four, willful trespass, remaining on land after warning. Um, Rhode Island general law is homeless bill of rights. Again, I've read that numerous times because that's been thrown at me a few times. Doesn't say they have the right to break the laws, all right? So, looking at all these, these are all being broken on a daily basis here. And, and I know it's hard for us to enforce it, but if I went and did all this, I guaranteed it'd be a different result.
Right. So there's, there's two issues with that list that I see. First, the first part, that everything that talks about parks and recreation specifically talks about fields and playgrounds. In my opinion, it's a stretch to say the curtilage down to the river is included in that. That's why I say I think that amendment needs to be amended to include town property in some fashion. We'll get a legal opinion on how to get that in there, but I think we need that in order to provide the teeth to enforce those.
How many encampments are down on the Riverwalk at Riverpoint?
Off of it, there's, there's plenty. The second part of that, most of the.
John Rock Riverwalk that goes all the way around the park and it comes inside and runs the river. There used to be a bike group. That's all considered playground and town area. That's all paths that were created by the, the Riverwalk.
So I think that's, in, in my opinion, that's an interpretation and it could be debatable. And the next part is what I think is a bigger issue, is those are municipal ordinances. So, the enforcement path for municipal ordinances is you give somebody a summons to appear in municipal court. If you're getting one for motor vehicle violation and you get fined or you don't appear, it can adversely affect your license. You can get your license suspended. If you're there on a housing issue, um, didn't clean up your yard, didn't cut your grass, whatever that is, you're called before the municipal court. If you don't comply or you don't show up, a lien can be put against your house. So there are, there are remedies there for enforcement purposes. All the ones that you mentioned, and this came up during our gazebo discussions, is all those you can give somebody a summons. If they appear, which I would suspect a vast majority would not, what enforcement do you have? You cannot, you could issue a fine that's never gonna be paid. So, the municipal court enforcement mechanism is broken at best. It's, it's not adequate for what they're looking to do. So then one path is to, how can you morph the rules that we wanna enforce into district court? And which, you know, with misdemeanors and, and initial arraignments for felonies before they go to superior court that has some teeth that actually potentially has fines again that probably wouldn't get paid, but has the threat of jail. That's not really, I think, the answer anyone's looking for um, in these scenarios, the, the threat of locking people up, um, for whatever the, their circumstances are. Um, I think, you know, coming from a career in law, some of, career in law enforcement, when people earn it, they earn it. Um, you, you kind of know it. But in these circumstances, I, I think we need to be cautious on involving the district court when appropriate. And that has a slew of side effects that eventually I wanna include in this to help making an educated decision or directive um, that that you need to be prepared for all the things that come with that, you know, the increase, um, burden on the court system, um, the sheriff's office, that if you arrest somebody and just say, for example, we give somebody a warning for trespassing on town property and we're gonna go with the trespass state law. Um, so we give them a warning, they don't leave, we arrest them for trespassing. We give them a summons or we bring them to district court where they're arraigned, they're given a court date and a couple of weeks to come back. The next day, they're putting their head down somewhere where they're not supposed to. Um, we arrest them again. Now they're a bail violator. They're gonna go to the A C I for two weeks. Um, so now we're, the A C I population is ballooning. Obviously, the person earned it, they know it, they did it. That's, that's, that's our system. Um, but when we do that, and, and I, and I don't wanna make this sounds like this is, these are excuses on why not to do something. I just wanna make sure we are prepared to handle what we're directed to do. We are now, since we took somebody into custody, we are now responsible for safeguarding their personal property. Essentially, just like seizing evidence, it needs to be tagged, identified, logged, and properly secured somewhere until we can properly return it. Uh, we can't just bulldoze it, bag it up, and throw it away. We're, we're responsible for that because we're taking somebody's liberties away. We're responsible for taking care of their property. Uh, so th- there's just things that will balloon and cause adverse effects, obviously, to our personnel, to our budgets. And obviously, that's, that's something that I think needs to be considered in this planning process. There, there are reactions to our actions.
Also, it's kind of dangerous down there. We were to go down there. I mean, I haven't been deep into it, but from what I've heard.
It's dangerous for the people that are there and, and.
For them and for our fire and police and rescue.
We are obligated and we wanna try to provide, do the best to provide for the health, safety, and well-being of everybody, including the people that are in the encampments. But especially those that need to respond to them. And that's another thing that will come out is there is difficulty responding to some of the encampments. They're not clear paths, they're not clear roads, we can't get emergency vehicles, they are in equipment. Um, you know, those, those generally hike in with your equipment. So, you know, that's, that's another issue and reason to do something about it. It's just, what is that something?
So I, I think we've been talking about this, I don't know, years now, with, with everybody and we, we all leave the meetings and we're in the same situation that we came in with, is what do we do? And, you know, a few things that, when this was on the agenda, you know, Jay, you had brought up.
We have circles, we talk in circles and we end up back in the same situation and we'll probably have this meeting fifty more times.
But, but one of the things you, one of the items that you brought up, one of the items that you brought up, one of the questions you asked, and I, I don't believe, I don't remember who you asked, I apologize. But it was one of, one of, an advocate, it might have been you, Kathy. Um, but you had asked about, we talked about vouchers. And does anybody in West Warwick have vouchers? We're talking about North Kingston, East Greenwich, or some, someplace like that. And you had mentioned, I, I'm not quoting you, but something to the effect that it's difficult to get to these people and have them fill out the paperwork. So, I'm totally looking at it and, and again, I, I'm not in that position and thank God I'm not, but if I was and I wanted to be out of it, I would have a pen in hand and be the pushing people out of the way to sign up to get the first voucher. And if that's not happening, to me, that says, I'm, I'm content where I am and I'm okay where I am.
Are there vouchers now?
Yeah, just, just come on up to the microphone. I can't have any yelling from the crowd.
So, I can't speak to whether it's vouchers because I don't, that's not where I work. My name is Kathy Schultz. I'm, um, um, I'm here as a resident, but I live in Hope, so, but I have a lot of, um, relationships here in West Warwick.
You were the one that was here for the.
So, yes. So, vouchers are a process, um, and that is a process that people have to be put on a waitlist. Um, it doesn't happen in two weeks. It doesn't happen in a year. It could take three years. It depends on what the voucher is. Um, but I do wanna make. Um but I do want to make one comment, then when we say that people are not accepting services, they most certainly are accepting services. Um they are getting outreach services, they are the most likely connected in some sense to Thrive Behavioral Health. Um and to even Thunder Master and and many other organizations that are going out there on a regular basis. The issue is, in this, I'm gonna, I actually read what Michelle Brophy wrote, sorry, um the solution is actually housing. Um and that's what what is lacking and that's why every year after year after year after year, we keep coming to this place. Um is because there, the people that are out there, we can all make an assumption that they don't want services. We can make an assumption they use drugs, probably are, I probably would be too if I was living in a tent, right? There's not enough housing across the state, let alone in West Warwick. So that's what the issue is. So even if we focus on the vouchers, because you're right, people need vouchers, it's still a a waitlist. If there are people that are out there with vouchers. To some of the things that were being said, guess what? If they go to the A C I for two weeks. If they're called, they lost that voucher. So that's a very true story. One of the reasons you're seeing an increase in the encampments right now. Is that, and I think I said this the last time I was here, this microphone is just uncomfortable because I'm so short, but um. Uh is that some of our shelter projects closed? Um and I think that the last time I was here, I said, be prepared, a shelter project's closing. They were the people from West Warwick who are now back outside again.
Temporarily permanently.
It's it's closed. It was one of the motel projects. Um and we were making great momentum and there have been solutions that have been offered. Um that didn't come to fruition, um it's unfortunate, but it didn't. Um and I do know that the town, town manager, some of the, you know. You all have been super supportive. I'm not going to sit here and say that you're not, and I would stop anybody to say that you haven't been. But the reality is, is that there has to be, and and this is what I've been posing all along, is a regional approach to this. It's talk to Warwick, talk to Coventry, because this is the bike path that goes across all the areas. These are people that, these are actually people from West Warwick. I, a lot of times people say, oh, they're not from around here, they are.
I think. Some of them are transnational, they're from One Sock, they're from West Warwick, I mean, I think it's.
Nobody from One Sock, I highly doubt is going to go up here.
Warwick, Warwick, Coventry, West Greenwich.
It's the Kent County area, yep. So that was what I've been kind of proposing all along is that there be a conversation across the towns and city. Um and try to come up with some kind of regional solution. I I in my head have the solution, we've talked about the solution, but we need property for that solution. And maybe it's not necessarily in West Warwick.
Yeah, well unfortunately, wherever the property is, somebody's not going to want it near their property.
No, in the Kent County area, they'll go. I believe they'll go and if I have to walk there myself, I'll make sure they go.
Won't go if some people don't want it near their house, near their apartments, I mean, we run into that, wherever we put it, someone will say. I'm not saying you're wrong.
No, no, no.
I'm just telling you, there's always going to be.
So if I could ask a question about that, so i- if there was a piece of property. Just a piece of property, no structures, no anything, nothing on it. Who's on the hook for the cost of putting something up on that property?
Um, well, I can tell you that we've had conversations, I'd rather somebody else speak to that, I don't want to put anybody on the spot, but. I know that there is interest in getting some support.
Is, my question is, are the taxpayers on the hook?
No, no.
Indirectly, they would be if there was police fire calls.
Grants, yeah, well, yes, you're right, but there's also, I I think, and I don't know if it's still, there's a rolling grant right now. From the Department of Housing that would actually supplement for any kind of additional use of any of the municipal um resources. No.
Tom, I know you're, I know you're in a boom, but. I just can't have you yelling from the back.
So so getting getting back real quick, because I I had the, I had the mic, can I have the mic again?
Yeah.
Counsel President?
Yes.
So.
Am I done?
So, yeah, thank you, thank you. Um with all this, and we've talked about the issues, we all know the issues. Bottom line, just can't go on like this anymore. You know, I mean, as a councilman, I'm getting more calls on. This topic than I actually have on Queequeh Avenue. Queequeh Avenue was, is huge, I'm getting calls all the time on that, um and that's not even our issue. But something like this, people are afraid. Um I'm going to echo just kind of what Mark and Dave said, you know, people are afraid in their own houses and that shouldn't be. Um the trash, I got a, received an email today regarding the trash that's um at Flat Top. And I was told, we're going back probably, I don't know, six or seven months ago, that there was one person there. And there's a, I can't, one person can't accumulate this much trash and this much garbage. And and it's awful and it's still there. So I don't know if it wasn't picked up by somebody or it's or it's all new, but we we just can't have it. You know, people that are involved with the town or or pay their taxes and and taxes go up every year. You know, they're looking at us to say, all right, what do we do? I don't feel comfortable, I don't feel safe. What are you going to do about it? You know, and that's kind of why we have this meeting, because this this can't keep going like, we can't leave this meeting tonight saying. We know the issue, we know the answer, we just can't get there right now, but this is still going on and it's only getting worse. So as a councilman and representing the people, I'm speaking for the people that have contacted me. You know, we want to do this in the most compassionate way, nobody wants to be that guy or that girl that says. We're going to bulldoze everything down. And then I don't, I'm not saying we should do that. But at some point, when you've tried this and tried that and done everything possible, what do you do? What kind of position does that put us in? Because the talking is is done, as far as I'm concerned. You know, we spent a lot of time on it, the advocates do a a great job, have a very difficult job. But this is the point that we're at, and I think leaving here tonight, we need to make some type of a decision where we're going to go.
We are, we are open to the public, but we're just letting the council speak now.
I'm done.
Anybody else from the council?
No, I think what Kathy said is true, we we. I would be far more comfortable, and I do think that the police do a good job. In going out when someone is breaking the law, they don't always know about. The propane tanks because people are reluctant to speak about it, and I get that. They are afraid and that's wrong as well. But I think we have to provide an alternative. To say, we have this place for you to go and we haven't been able to do that for some reason.
Well, the the last conversation I had with the resident the other night, she's been here. Over forty years, she's never had an unsafe feeling in her yard. She now has an unsafe feeling. And she says at her age, she does not feel like, even though the market's great, she has a beautiful home. She says, but she cannot enjoy it here in West Warwick anymore. And she feels she might have to sell because of. What she's enduring on. Close to the bike path, the Riverwalk.
And clearly, that should not be happening. We need to work together and I don't think it's a just a West Warwick issue, the state really does need to be involved. Think about how small the state of Rhode Island is compared to municipalities, but to criminalize it, I'm not sure that's the right answer. Um and there are people out there and there are families out there that are out there. Because they're afraid that they're going to be broken up. So there are people that don't necessarily want to be in that situation. But they don't see an alternative if they have children especially, and there are children out there. So it it's clearly not an easy. Um but if we're going to have an edict or we're going to work towards an ordinance. We need to have everything in line and it's not just sending someone into bulldoze, in my opinion. And we need to understand what the implications are. That first meeting actually was healthy and the town prosecutor was there too. Um. I think we need to include um some of the behavioral health, some of our community partners at this point in time as well. But we have to have a plan to just say, we're going to throw everybody out on November first. I think we're just, we're setting ourselves up for failure. And and I think we need to know exactly what we need to do and understand what the implications are going to be. Ideally, I would love to say that we had. We were able to go to someone and say, you have this place, we have this place for you where you can get services. Go there and if you say no. Then that's that's on you and we're going to take care of it, we're going to move you out. We don't have that place right now, we need to find that place. And. The state to to talk about ultimately, and and Tom's probably, ultimately, it's a taxpayer thing. A lot of it's federal funding, there's state funding, it would not be West Warwick taxpayer dollars that would be uh be used. We don't want to be in the business of being landlords, I don't think, and that's, those are the conversations we've had over the last. I don't know, is it two years now?
Long time.
Yeah, um you know, Kathy and Michelle are on those on those calls. Winter's coming, we have temporary solutions up at the Civic Center, we need to find, and we do have some affordable housing coming in. We we last, at the last meeting approved Lipit Mill, that's going to be affordable housing, that's not until next summer. So we do have some. Places that we will be able to offer people and people will have opportunities to have housing that they can afford. It's not as simple as bulldozing and that's not something that I would support. These are moms and dads and brothers and sisters.
And and Mark, Mark kind of touched on this before, it's about being a good neighbor, I think.
Absolutely.
What they're doing out there, if if whether it's leaving trash everywhere, like like up at Flat Top Park. And some of the things they're doing, but they're not being good neighbors, I think if they were, if they were being, if they were there. And they weren't causing issues, I think that we probably wouldn't be having this meeting right now.
I agree with you.
That's not the case.
No.
No, no.
Why we're having this meeting again.
So when you say, but I just want to really, it's not like necessarily the people down there being quiet and we're bothered of their existence, I think that. The people in the community are bothered by the things that they're doing. And we can be bothered that, we can be bothered that they're for a different reason, uh out of empathy. But we can be empathetic to the community of things that they're doing out there that's disturbing the rest of the community.
And for the record, I'm not for bulldozing property, I don't know.
I just, I heard that thrown out, which makes me nervous.
What we're doing isn't working. It's that simple, it's not working.
And I I do feel a need to push back slightly on what you said about children and families being out there. That may be the case, but I can tell you one thing, that if if I was ever in that position and I had children. The last place I'm going to bring my family and children is to an encampment where there's known drug use, abuse, I should say, and sex offenders. I'm I'm not, this is not an indictment on the homeless, this, I'm talking about the encampments and all the trouble that comes with the encampments. Right, so I don't want anybody to think that I'm I'm um. Clueless to that.
Oh, I I didn't insinuate that.
No, I know you didn't, but but the family thing, I I I do think that that's a, that's a talking point. That's trying to garner some sort of.
No, it's a real, it's a real situation.
It may be, I'm not going to say, I'm not going to dispute that one hundred percent it's not true, but again. If I've got kids and I find myself in that unfortunate position, the last place I'm bringing them is with known drug abusers and sex offenders. And if people are doing that, then that's just flat out bad parenting.
You're you're assuming that all encampments, and there are many, and Chief Aron has provided. Um are the big encampments that you're talking about, where there is drug use, where there is. And again, the police are going in and taking care of those when needed. It's difficult, it's not the best answer, we need to, we need to find a solution where we can.
But I think a- as as great as your solution or your suggestion of a solution is, I I wish there was a place for people to go. There isn't. And there won't be, because three years ago, we were talking about this as a town. Last year, we were talking about this and we're still talking about this and not one thing has been done. And by the time, if we started today. If we started today, there will not be a place in. In a, in the town or in the in the region for another year or two or three. I don't see how that's going to come online. And in the meantime. This festers.
Something needs to be done, but it needs to be done humanely and not everyone is a drug addict and a and a sex offender. I just want to make that clear, that's all.
Not everybody.
I will have a question, but after you, because you're standing there.
Thank you. Um state your name and address.
Vincent Marzullo, twenty eight Crossland Road, uh this is a a complicated and a serious issue. For uh everyone in the state of Rhode Island. And it's, it's happening because the caretakers of our system have neglected their duty. For at least ten years, if not more. When our solicitor was a member of the General Assembly in two thousand and eleven, legislation, state law was passed. To establish an interagency council on homelessness. Because there was a declaration by the General Assembly that homelessness was not only an issue and unsafe. For the well-being of those who were unhoused, but also to the detriment of the general public. And it mandated that the state would establish a strategic plan to end homelessness in the state of Rhode Island. That group met for about two or three years and then for whatever reason, it shut down in two thousand and fifteen. So for ten years, the effort that was legislated to eliminate homelessness and establish the capacity. To deal with these issues and they're complex have has been abandoned. They fail, those public officials that have taken an oath. They have failed in their oath and this is an issue under consideration for legal action, if it if it really has to go that way. By advocates of the homeless, of the unhoused community. Um tomorrow, many of the people in the unhoused community, particularly in Providence. Are having a conversation, a meeting with Mayor Smiley at Mathewson Street Church. To see how the issue can be better handled in a humane, responsible, civil way. I suggested in the past, and I, to my knowledge, it still has not been done, and I've been communicating formally with him. The cities and towns are overwhelmed, West Warwick alone can't deal with this issue. There's really got to be involvement and a strategic effort with the league of cities and towns. I mean, Warwick's got the problem, Branson's got the problem, South County, it's it's in Newport, Northern Rhode, so. Each community on its own can't really properly addres- address this issue. Especially when the state has retreated from its duty to develop the capacity service-wise. Um housing-wise, and I I think what was outlined by the town manager makes a lot of sense. But it also requires a lot more thought and participation. And as much as you might want to or think that we're going to come up with a solution today. As as the councilwoman indicated, we can't criminalize our way out of this issue, this town or any town. And it's not that I'm soft on law enforcement. My son's a cop in New York, my father was, my brother-in-law was the president of the union. For ten weeks, I dealt with this issue on Charles Street at the Da Vinci Center. I walked in there to try and serve meals and help people in that in that community. I was faced with organized crime. Drug, uh you know, drug dealers, car bombings, tried to kill people at night in the parking lot. Beating up the elderly in Charles Place, the kids next door that are going to the middle school and in the middle is a senior center. You know, that, I think that was one of the first times that there was significant attention, media attention to the issue. It wasn't dealt with appropriately, you know, Valisenti got uh Valisenti got Alviti to come in there and they bulldozed. You know, the tenth encampment, but the service capacity is not sufficient. To deal with either the, you know, the mental health issues, the drug issues. I mean, I'm at Mathewson Street Church on Fridays and Sunday mornings intentionally. Because I want to understand what the street workers are doing, the service providers, and equally important, the relationships with those themselves who are unhoused. And it's been enormously revealing and enormously, you know, frustrating and depressing. Because there's so much more we can do, yet the governor and the political leadership has not brought everybody together. To really address this from a joint task force standpoint. Fortunately, because the communications that Eric Hirsch and I, who's one of the advocates professor at P C. Have had formally with the governor and even with Dan Conn as the interim housing secretary. Dan is completely supportive of reactivating the interagency council. The whatever particular efforts you or others may come up with in the next few days, next week. It's not going to turn this around overnight, just not going to happen. You know, there's probably at least eight hundred to a thousand people that are unhoused out in communities throughout Rhode Island. On Sunday mornings, we serve three hundred to three hundred and fifty people breakfast at at Mathewson Street Church. And more and more of them are either elderly or veterans. So, you know. So, you know, I, I would again urge you, I mean, whatever you choose to do locally is one thing, but you gotta, I think, involve Ernie Almonte and the League of Cities and Towns and get organized. You're all politicians. Organize some of the other cities and towns to be of one voice in order to deal with the governor and the general. I, we sent a communication to the Speaker of the House. His responses will meet after the election. But what about tonight? The people who are on the street tonight, what about tonight? He doesn't have, he didn't have a primary, didn't have a general election, and his response to the unhoused is we'll talk about it after the election. I also sent this week, not me, Eric Hirsch and I, we sent that communication to Pat Serpa as the Chair of the House Oversight Committee. She has yet to respond. At least we got to respond from the governor's office, from his Chief of Staff, Tony O'Fazzo, and Tony set up the meeting with Dan Connors, which was a very, very productive and respectful meeting. And I think more good will come out of that.
So a question for you, because you're very well spoken on this, and I appreciate the info that you're bringing to us. Our governor goes on the news and says that the state has budgeted $30 million a year to address this issue.
Right.
In your opinion, is this just?
Wasted money. There were no outcomes on, she has over 90 supportive services contracts. She acknowledged that there were, there were not adequate outcomes or deliverables in the contracts, let alone whatever oversight should be there for those millions of dollars.
Right, 30 million is a lot of money.
Tell me about it.
What are they utilizing, what are they utilizing that money for then?
Good question. And, and then there's a reporter in the media today that, that under Stefan Pryor's watch, just a few million dollars out of like 20 or 30 million dollars was spent. So they weren't, they weren't taking advantage of the resources that were allocated by the General Assembly to build the capacity. No one seems to be holding their feet to the fire to give us what we need to service the population. So here we are chasing our tails, still looking for a solution at the municipal level, and it, and it, and it's greater than we could ever really deal with. And, you know, I, and I get it. I mean, I, I went down that bike path with my five-year-old granddaughter, and we witnessed all, all of that, you know? And, and I would dare, when I was back on Charles Street, I went down there. I took a new Senator Jake Bazillion, gave them all down there so that they could actually witness this stuff. And yet we don't have the coordinated effort, particularly at the, at the, you know, at the significant level that it needs to be. When I worked with National Service and got deployed by FEMA to help out in disaster relief, there would always be a joint field office, a unified command in order to deal with it, similar to what the town manager suggested as a task force. We don't have that in Rhode Island. We're dealing with this like we're F Troop, crying out loud. It's a disgrace. And, and, and we're strangling the cities and towns to try and come up with an answer, like, you know, Cranston and, and it, all it really does is create division in the community. And, and we have more and more people.
Ben, I know what you're saying about working with other communities, but even Cranston just went through this. Their mayor wants one thing, their council wants another. You know, Warwick's going through the same. Coventry's, they got all new elected officials, all through the new town managers. So it's not just, and I think what you said about the state is probably 100% accurate.
Where's the Speaker of the House sitting down to work out this stuff?
But I think they're looking at each city and town to rectify their own issues.
That's a divisive game.
It's not the right issue. It's not the right way to handle it.
They passed legislation in 2011 said that this was a state problem and detrimental to the welfare and well-being of the entire state, not just those who are unhoused. And they mandated that there be a strategic plan to address and ameliorate the situation and that we would be homeless free. Why can't Rhode Island be homeless free? You got all these politicians that are run away from, from the issue, and they place that burden at the, at the municipal level because we get the phone calls and we see it and we got to live it. So, you know, I, I, I would again suggest that you put your political hat on as well in terms of how we're going to deal with the General Assembly, the governor and the speaker. They got to be at the table and being much more helpful to support what's needed at the municipal end. You know, they shortchanged the service providers. They're not getting the money. They shut down the, and understand that a lot of those individuals who refuse to help, they don't want to go to some of these shelters because they're unsafe, they're un, they're not clean, they're an environmental hazard, again, because there's no oversight of those operations. Why Stefan didn't put that in, in play and do a better job with that, I don't know. But Dan Connors and his staff right now know that they got that deficiency, and they got to tighten up their operational plan. So, you know, I, I mean, I, I don't have an immediate solution for this, but I mean, we need to get everybody together on this, the cities and towns, the governor. And, 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 and if that were to be done, I think we would probably get more support from the feds in dealing with this because it would demonstrate that Rhode Island is intentional about becoming homeless. If there is a state that could do it, we could do it. So, I mean, that's my, that's my, that's my story, and I'm sticking to it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
State your name and address for the record.
Gail Loud, yeah, 290 St. Washington, Washington Street, West Warwick. I was going to read out of my book, but I'm not going to do that. I was told by one of the homelesses, because I work with them, I go to Grace Church, and I, and the homeless are houseless because they want to be houseless people for a long time. One of the girls said to me, you know, Gail, I have money. It's just the apartments are so expensive, I can't afford it. I'm, I just, my mama died last year, September 29th, 23rd. I lived in Niece Greenwich. I didn't, I didn't ask to be thrown out or put out in the street. I'm homeless myself. These people, if you put them to work, you tell them, listen, you're going to clean your mess, put a bucket out there, they'll do it. They're totally, they'll clean up. There's not, no way to put the garbage. That's one of the reasons. They want to help the community. If you ask them, go, go do somebody's grass, they'll do that. These people help each other. They're not, they're not out there to hurt or damage anybody's properties. They're not, they, they help one another. I've seen it. I'm down, I went there today because I'm trying to, me and a friend of mine is trying to get something together with our church and feed them and have them come in, take the food out. And, and, and in winter, we, we give them hats, gloves, pants. We clothe them. We feed them every Sunday up at church. We feed them every Sunday, and they appreciate that. And they're, they clean up after themselves. And that's, they could just leave everything on the table. They don't, they clean after themselves. I think people see them, and I'm guilty. I think God made me homeless because I am one who used to say, why are they on the street taking money? That's so, that's so nasty. But now I understand because I see their life. People are painters, they're construction workers, they're artists. These are people with brains. But people are looking at them like they're low class. They're really not. They, they have a brain, some have mentally illness. I know this lady, Linda and her, her son James, right behind the, the West Warwick Housing is not, I mean, they're, they're sick. She don't belong down there. She belongs in a place that will help her. And her son is the same way, James. They need help. And I don't understand how you people say there's help out there and they don't want it. Yeah, they do. And he said it. It's not safe. They get raped, they get stolen from. And if I go to a place like that, they steal from me. I'm defending my property. There's no way I'm going to let someone walk away my stuff, or I'm, I'm going to get raped. There is no possible way that's going to happen. So what do I do? I'm going to go to jail because I'm trying to go to a safe house instead of being outside? It's cold out there now. It's freezing. They don't want to be out there. Ask them to do something, help the community, and they will. Please don't put them down. They feel down enough. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Father Fleming, pastor of St. John and James, 20 Washington Street. I, I echo the sentiment. We want to help them. We do. It's, it's in our charge to be charitable. But you can bring a horse to water, but you can't force a horse to drink the water. You can do as much as you can to bring them services, but it behooves them to take action for themselves. I've dealt with addiction. I've dealt with people who have struggled their whole life, and everyone was a better advocate for them than they were for themselves. But at some point, justice had to be done. In my own family, when alcoholism was a problem, justice had to be done, and they had to be put out of the house. And I brought them to the homeless shelter and left them there and said, this is the life you're choosing for yourself because you can't live here and be destructive in my home. And because he was faced with a choice to live better for himself or to be homeless and left to his own devices, he woke up and he was forced to choose the better life. Thank goodness for that. But that's the truth. We want better for them, but we can't force them to take action. And although we, we want the very best for them, sometimes they force us to enforce justice because what we need is safe schools. We need a safe community. We need neighbors who care for one another. We need neighbors who look out for one another. I know that if I was in any need ever, I know that parishioners of mine would come to my door and help with anything I needed, and I would do the same for them. But that's because we're neighbors who care for one another, who look out for one another's good. And you'll find that in every caste and in every community. But what it behooves us to do as a community is to safeguard our law, to safeguard and to protect it. So we have all these services. I can say that West Warwick Food Agency, just down on, is it Main Street that goes Main Street? They sent out $321,000 worth of free food from June through August at $4 a meal. That means they gave $321,000 worth of food out for free at $4 a meal to anyone who asked, families and individuals. That's not a Catholic thing. That's just a community thing. What a wonderful thing we do. The church, we, we raised a good amount of money for them and give them a lot of our resources. We have a food cupboard bin in our, in our parish, and it is filled up every week, and it goes right there for donations around Christmas, around Easter, around Thanksgiving. We feed the homeless. We give them food. We take care of them as best we can. And I was fighting. I was walking down the bike path, asking people to come and eat a free meal. And they said, no, 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 thanks. We're going to get food later. We want to do something different. Can't force them to take other resources. We can only offer them. And when they refuse, if they continue to be destructive, then we have to be just to us. We have to make sure that we safeguard our communities despite their choices. That's all we're asking. We're asking that we take action so that we safeguard our community, safeguard our children, keep them away from what we know is going to be harmful for them in the end. Sometimes you just have to make the hard choice. I'll give you one anecdote, and then I'll sit down because I'm not going to go on forever. This isn't a Sunday homily, I promise. Outside my church on a Saturday morning, I had a funeral. And sitting on my steps, because I'm right next to the gazebo, were a couple of homeless people, one of them was smoking weed. And I said, are you smoking weed on my, on my steps? And he said, you know, Father, I'm free to do whatever I want. I said, that's great, but you can't do it here. So you have to move on. That's all we're saying. You're going to choose to do what you want, but you can't do it in West Warwick, not at the expense of our children, not at the expense of our residents, and not at the expense of our common good.
Good evening. My name is Raya Lovell. I live at One Patricia Circle in Smithfield. I have heard a lot of anecdotal scenarios tonight, and so I'm going to share a few, and then I'm going to share some data points. I did live in West Warwick for five years. I'm probably one of the younger people in this room, and I was priced out to live in West Warwick. I cannot afford housing in West Warwick. I have my master's degree. I have no children. I'm in my twenties and I can't live here. How do you expect, as you said, families, a single mom, to live in West Warwick? They cannot afford it. I can't afford it, and I have no children. And I have education, and I lived here. I came from these communities. So I want to be clear with that. But I also work for the Rhode Island Coalition to End Homelessness. I'm the statewide outreach coordinator. So I brought some data points. I heard you say that many of the folks living outside are not from this area, and to Michelle's point, or to Kathy's point, sorry, that, that's not true. And I actually was speaking with Thrive Behavioral Health that 70% of the clients grew up here. So out of the 60 people that are living outside in Kent County, all of Kent County, 70% grew up here. So we're talking about your, your friends, your neighbors, as you love to say, your, the people who went to the high school, the people who did give taxpayer monies to West Warwick stay, want to stay in West Warwick. There is about 2,500 people staying outside, and that was counted in January 2024. That is a 60% increase from last year. That is a 500% increase from 2019. So when you're thinking of that, it's homelessness is on the rise in every single city and town in Rhode Island. I will say that giving a notice to vacate and sweeping these encampments is not going to solve the problem because they are going to stay in the community that they know and love, and they will just be moving to another spot. And we see this time and time again, Cranston, Win Socket, Providence, they all stay in the spots that they feel comfortable in. I think one of the solutions is providing trash cans, Sharps containers, creating a workforce, as you, as you mentioned, with the town council and other folks that have concerns. And I do want to condemn, like, I want to say to everyone, like, I'm very, it's nice to see that so many people care about this community. I wanted to live in this community, and I wasn't able to afford this own community. Giving out food does not solve the problem. Creating more affordable housing and shelter options for Kent County solves the problem. I know that that doesn't fall on you. That's, falls on the state, and I am working towards that. But if you have more concerns, and I believe that you all are very smart people, we could all create a task force with Thrive Behavioral Health and Incredible Outreach Workers at the HES, Parents Support Network, the other social service agencies that are constantly working tirelessly with these folks who want to get housed. Housing wait lists are up to a year or more. So it's not going to be solved overnight. If you give them a notice to vacate, the encampments will just pop up somewhere else in your neighborhood. They, the folks that are from here do not want to live anywhere else from the community that they came from and provide a taxpayer money. If you, and I, one more point, it cost the taxpayers, it, for one inmate in the ACI, $100,000 in 2020. So, and that, all that money comes from the taxpayer money. So I just want to be clear that if you press charges against the folks that are living outside and they end up in the ACI, which they will, they cannot afford your fines. They can't afford an apartment, just like me, in your neighborhoods. They are going to just be taken out of our taxpayer money because they will be sent to the ACI, $100,000 in 2020, and it's only going up. So I just want to be clear, if there's anyone here who would love to work towards solving this and working with the homeless response system, I think all the social service activists would be very happy and pleased to be a part of those conversations because we do have some solid solutions. But if you give a notice to vacate in an encampment or you sweep an encampment, it will just pop up. This issue is not going away. Thank you.
And I think we've talked about that in the past. You know, because we talked about Flat Top, we talked about Pulaski Street, where on East Main, there was one resident a little over a year ago. Now there's over 50. Because in a, I have mixed emotions about this because it is town property. Okay? And where they move to could be private property. Then you have no say whatsoever unless the private property owner deals with it on their own. But I, I totally agree that if we ask them to leave East Main, and trust me, I've said November 1st would be a good date. I've heard October 1st. I've heard October 15th. I, I threw out November 1st, and I think Mary Beth kind of said that earlier. But I know they're going somewhere else. I just want everybody to be prepared. They're going somewhere else, and I don't believe they're going to Warwick. I don't believe they're going to go to Coventry. They're going somewhere else. And we're going to still get those complaints. We're still going to get those concerns about it. Again, I, I shared examples from East Main Street, and I don't think it's fair to them who've lived there for many years and have to worry about being in their backyards and having people hanging over their fence. hanging over their fence, or hogging school, having kids playing in the playground, and, and having to deal with headaches outside the fence. It's not fair to our teachers, our staff, our police department, our fire department, our children. It's, it's, it's a damned if you do, damned if you don't moment here, and it's, it's, it's a hard decision. And to me, it's, it's public property. Not one person in here could go erect a, I say tomorrow, we go erect a tent right here in front of Town Hall. I guarantee you, we're all thrown out tomorrow afternoon. I hate to say it that way, but that's what would happen. But if I'm gonna go hide and go do what I want, and we could just be sitting there. We just crucified a lady who was trying to run a business that she had illegal alcohol going on at her business, and we were kinda pushing off her license. Well, this is going on at every site. We, she just felt she was attacked. Well, I think the residents on East Main are feeling they being attacked from the woods. It's unfortunate. What can we do to solve it? Unfortunately, we can't build houses. None of us are up here capable of building those houses. Right? We don't, we don't have the funding. I thought you laughed at me.
No, sorry.
But it's, it's, I, I, I met an individual who works at EB who was homeless, living in his car. Making thirty dollars an hour. Twenty-five to thirty dollars an hour. And he can't afford a house. We brought that up last council meeting. Eighteen hundred dollars to twenty-five hundred dollars a month for a one bedroom? Very, very harsh. Can't, you can't afford it. I know if I didn't buy a house twenty years ago, I don't think I can afford one today. Because the same house is almost tripled. So it, 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 it's, again, a damned if you do, damned if you don't moment. So, Father, if you wanna come up, I'm speaking about damned if you don't.
I, I don't think more, like, this isn't just about living in the woods, or residing, or camping in the woods. It's what's coming along with this, though. It's the behavior. And the behavior, people have to be held accountable, whether it's us, you, or anybody else who's pitching a tent down at Riverpoint Park at ten o'clock at night. And no matter what anybody says, the pictures are here. It's the trash. It's, it's the needles. I'm still, we've been talking about this for two years. I still would like to know where people are getting the needles. Because I really don't, I don't know. So, well, hang on, I'm not done. I'm not, I would like to know the answer, but, but bottom line is, when you have all the trash, and there is trash. There's trash everywhere. Everywhere that people who plopped down and took an encampment and then have been asked to move, the, the residual is, it's not just a garbage bag, or people, it's not littering at this point. It's, it's near the river. It's, it is. I mean, I'm not making this up. I have pictures. We've had the River Thirty go out. We've had our DPW go out there in an unsafe, what I feel is an unsafe situation, and picking up other people's trash, human feces, and needles. And that's, that's not fair. That's not cool. But that's what we're left with. And I think at this point, this is what we see, and this is what's coming to us. If somebody was out there with a tent, I know where there's places where people are. I know they're there. Some of you know they're there. They don't bother anybody. There's no issue. But when you have people getting chased with an axe, and then you put our police department, right, and it's true, because we get the reports. And this is why we have the meeting tonight. When we have our police chief sending, he sends us weekly notes on everything going on in our respective wards. And the ones that stick out, I'd have to say it, but it's not, the common areas are more of, I would say, Crompton, Arctic, and Phoenix. Not that it's not happening anywhere else. And correct, please correct me if I'm wrong.
Riverpoint.
We, Riverpoint, sorry. We all get them. And it is disturbing. And then the fire has to go out. And then our DPW has to go out. And they're all being put in an unsafe situation. It doesn't come down to taxpayer money at that point. It's that we're putting these people in harm's way, and they work for us, and that's not cool. And that's all about behavior. That's what it is. Pulaski Street, Woodford. Wendy, I'm looking at you, because we've dealt with that in that area. We're cleaning it. People are cleaning it, putting out garbage bags from along the river, putting them on the street for our DPW to go pick up. How many bags did it take?
We've supplied dumpsters.
Dumpsters, barrels. So it's not like we're not doing our part. But everybody has to do their own. And we are being, and we're on the hook for it. And what Dave's saying is absolutely true. I've had people call me and say, people are going in my shed. I have it on camera. And I've taken a propane tank. You know, it's just, you can't do that. It doesn't matter if you're homeless or you're not homeless. If I open up a bottle right now on the outside of Town Hall, and Chief Levine went to arrest me, which he should, my first thing that I would say is, go arrest everybody else in the woods that has an open container. And it's not being done. So how can you target me? And I'm wrong. But this is what it is. It's about behavior, the whole thing. The gazebo is about behavior. It's not anybody going to hang out at the gazebo. It's what they're doing it. When you just said, they're smoking a joint outside of the gazebo. You can't do it. We have a law against it. You can't do it. And to be honest with you, not to be heartless, but it's pretty sickening how we're going up every meeting, and we're going around and around about the same thing. It's not about homeless. It's about behavior.
Jay, just, just for the record, he was smoking on the church stairs, which is not public property.
It doesn't ma, it doesn't matter.
The marijuana laws have changed. That matters. That's the problem, right?
You know my point, though. My point is behavior.
It is behavior. Yes.
And correct me if I'm wrong. I can be wrong. Maybe I might see things differently, but that's kinda where I'm focusing. It's unsafe. And it needs to be addressed. And if it's coming from people pitching a tent on a bike path, then it needs to be addressed down there. It's addressed at people's houses.
I, I have two residents, one on Fairview and one on East Main, who wanted to come to this meeting, but they fear retribution and haven't lived there.
And that's not right. And I really think it needs to be addressed.
And both were elderly, so I understand. They have no means of defense. You know, they, they basically said, I'm afraid to come here.
And that's not right.
Because you don't have to come. They, they came right here to Town Hall asking, how do I, how do I put this on the agenda, but I don't wanna be known. I said, I got a phone call to give them my, if they're in my ward, give them my number. You know, and I spoke to him on the phone. I don't want them to fear that. I, I'll take the representation for them. That's what I'm elected to do. And that's why I'm bringing it here tonight, and that's why I know Mark brought it up, and I think I said it last time, and I know the two of you weren't here. I said, most people have said to me, if they minded their business, kept it clean, and didn't bother their property, they probably wouldn't say boo. But unfortunately, that's not what's going on. It's a group that is causing a lot of filth, dirtiness, theft, and unfairly causing concerns in neighborhoods for people that have lived there for years. And they've never had to deal with this before. And like I said, East Main, there was a little group behind the um, storage facility. We cleaned that up. It was one person. And I was asked specifically, can we let that one person, because we're working, we're gonna try to get him somewhere? Great. Year later, I got fifty. You know, because they were pushed out of other areas. Now, again, I believe, I don't care if I put a November first date on it. They're leaving there. They're going there, there, or there. They are. That's, that's gonna be the biggest problem, is where, and what, what enforcement. And I said it here before, I don't wanna see anyone get arrested that has an opportunity, that possibly can get a job, but because of that record, may affect them from getting that job. You know, that's,
It comes down to the behavior, though.
I understand.
It's not about, nobody wants you to bring up the ACI. Nobody wants to have, send somebody to the ACI, and it's not about money. It's about the behavior. And if the behavior isn't gonna change, if they went to the ACI and came out in two weeks and the behavior hasn't changed, we, we have the same problem. So it doesn't matter if they're right here in this room, or they're across the street. If the behavior isn't gonna change, we're still gonna be at the same problem. So if they don't wanna correct their own behavior, then what? Then we're putting in a very difficult spot again, right? Saying, what do we do?
And I just wanna point out something, and I know, I think Vin brought it up, the cities, leagues, and towns. My suggestion to the town manager is that maybe do that. But I just wanna point out something. When, when we have those meetings, if it's not here in this council chambers, only two of us can go. You can't sit here as a collective body. So two of us, and I, I, I will be honest, there was a call from the town manager basically saying, who wants to be part of Monday's meeting? I stepped away. Jay and Jay weren't here last meeting. Mark, I know you, you were, thought you were gonna go, but something happened. I looked at it this way, as a councilperson and as the president. I feel we have two people here that are pretty much on both sides. They agree, but they disagree. And I looked at it and I said, Mark, I'm, I'll, I'll let you go, because I didn't want more than two of us in the room that would break the law of having open meetings. So I know, Mark, something did happen where you weren't able to attend, but I, I looked at it as these two heads can get in one room and try to work with each other and figure out what can be going on and what we can do. Because I'm gonna be honest, this is over my pay grade. I'm not an expert on homelessness. Have I had family and relatives and friends who have dealt with it? Absolutely. But I'm not the expert. You know, I can only tell people, do your best. I tell my children, do their best. I can help my parents. I can help whoever. But, you know, not every family's built that way. And unfortunately, some people don't have the back, the support of their families. They, they get thrown out to that street. And sometimes it's hard to make those decisions. And like Father said, he had to make a decision. But you don't always get that result. You know, once you send somebody out, and I pray to God that nobody in here is ever homeless or homeless again. You know, I know some of you that are here that are advocates were homeless. I know some of you here admitted tonight that you are homeless. You know, I wish there was an easy answer for this. But again, it's town property. It needs to be respected. We went through this with the gazebo. It's unfortunate when the homeless leave these encampments. They don't just leave a bag of trash. It's not something you just pick up at God's pocket, throw it in the dumpster. It's, it's a dumpster. And it's an un, unsafe dumpster. That's what my concern is. And I, and, you know, one constituent, one resident came up here and said, God forbid if one of these kids get poked with this needle. Or if they're cleaning, or even, even you guys are cleaning and you get poked with that needle, you don't know. You, you don't know what diseases are out there, what could happen to you, and what can happen to our children. That's what this is all about. It's about safety and fairness.
Michelle Brophy, I'm not a resident of West Warwick, but I've worked with the town for the last two years on weekly calls. So just wanted to say a few words. I think the town manager and Vin talked about bringing people together to form a task force for solutions, because I hear all the frustrations, because we all care about people. I was at a meeting in Windsocket. I started working with Wind, uh, West Warwick. At the same time, I started working with Windsocket, same city council calls these meetings together to look at solutions. And today, we were talking about how do we create a campaign, because everyone cares. We're compassionate people. You're courageous. I, I said to the speaker recently, thank you for being courageous. Not everybody cares about housing and homelessness and they're not willing to step up and do something about it. So you're doing that. And now we've been doing this for a long time, and, and nothing's really come to fruition. So I see the frustration, but I also think that there is a solution. Nationally, there's a solution as a best practice. It's called permanent supportive housing, affordable housing coupled with services that address some of the behavior issues we're talking about. Rhode Island's in a tough place right now, because, you know, for the thirty years Vin talked about, we haven't been building affordable housing, so we're behind. So if tomorrow you gave every person on the street a voucher, they're not gonna find one. If they, you know, signed up for a waiting list, I tell people, sign up for ten to twenty different places, because it's gonna take you three to ten years to get to the top of that list. So if you have a, a, a adult child with a developmental disability, sign that child up when they hit eighteen, and maybe in ten years, they might have, they might be at the top of the list for housing. And when people don't have families and they don't have the social connectedness, that's how they fall into homelessness. And, you know, when you're living out on the street and you're doing things to survive, that's when mental health comes along, behavioral health comes along. But it's, it's a proven fact that people are homeless because they don't have housing. So in communities where you have high number of people with substance use disorders or mental health issues, they don't have the high numbers of homelessness. The communities who have the high numbers of homelessness are the communities that aren't creating affordable housing. So like, we're number one in Rhode Island for not creating affordable housing. So it's sad that we got here, but I, I thank you all for trying to look at the solution. I think when proposals come around for affordable housing, looking for ways to actually say yes to those is gonna be a way out of it. But right now, we're, we're far behind. Like you said, it's gonna take a year, a year and a half to get the project you just approved up and running and have people in there. And then once you get it up and running, the units are affordable for people at sixty percent above, so we're gonna have to find deeper subsidies and I know the West Warwick Housing Authority is at the table with us, so that, that's a good thing. But I, I would love to work on solutions. So that's what we did today in Windsocket. We, you know, we created a plan. Now we're gonna create an action plan. And we actually had the people who were being impacted by people living outside, because they're, they're saying the same thing in Windsocket. It's almost the same exact conversation we're having here tonight. But they came to the table and they said, we, we've been living here for six years and it's not, nothing's changing. So they said, we decided to come to the sa, table to see how we can help. So I think if we can get to that point, supportive housing is not only cost effective, it doesn't just help the individuals, it helps their family members, it helps communities. You wanna have a thriving Arctic where people can go to church and get married and have funerals without people interrupting their, the services, then we have to actually provide the housing that people need. And we have to provide the services to work on the behavior. But, you know, I, I just really feel like you're at like this, this turning point. And I know you're frustrated, and you guys have been doing this for a long time. I've been doing it for thirty years. And it shouldn't take this long to actually do the right thing, but I just applaud you for everything you've done. And if there's anything I can do, I work at the Department of Behavioral Health. I work with you all the time. I do think it's gonna take the state and the local level to come together, the local more to develop and cite the housing, and the state to address the, the intermediate need of, you know, navigation centers. But I just wanted to bring us back to the idea of, of doing the compassionate thing. You know, I was, you know, went to Catholic schools all my life. I wrote a little paper that the HES has for faith-based communities and what they can do. I mean, it's more than just, you know, giving money, but we have to change, change the system that we're in. Change the communities wanting affordable housing in the community and not just coming out and saying no to things. So again, I'm here to help, but I can hear the frustration in all your voice, and I feel like we're going around in circles, but to come back to the solution, would love to be part of that with you.
Michelle, I, I, I think you get the nail on the head a little bit, but I think the system is broken. And, and I brought this up last time. I used East Greenwich as an example. Met a lady who came from Warwick, who had a house.
Yeah.
She just didn't like where she was living, so she moved to East Greenwich to their affordable housing. Great. But what about the homeless? Now, when you talk about West Warwick housing, I'll use Clyde Towers as an example, because it's my ward. I'm pretty involved over there. I get a lot of emails and whatever, but at one time, the waiting list was under twenty-five. It's over a hundred fifty right now. Secondly, veterans are number one. It's the new rule, veterans are number one to make the decision. Even if that veteran already has a home, they're still number one in that decision. Homeless are always number two and three. We have to look at people who have existing ho, housing should not be getting houses over the homeless with these vouchers, affordable living. And that's what these are. These are affordable living homes. These, these are government subsidized homes. And I totally agree, veterans, they served our country. They deserve everything. But if people are in homes already, and we're picking people who are, already have a home over a homeless person.
Except for some, some of the veterans that could end up homeless, homeless if they don't make that transition, right?
And, and there's, there's, but there's got to be, there's got to be a way that that's determined. Now, the, the Warwick situation, that was not a veteran. That was a lady who told me, I just didn't like where I lived off West Shore Road. And now she's living on Route Two in East Greenwich.
We can talk to Steve O'Rourke at the Housing Authority. They set their own preferences. Before I came to the state, I worked at the Corporation for Supportive Housing, and we worked with public housing authorities across the country. So we can talk to them. They can put in priorities for West Warwick residents. So we can talk to them, they can put in priorities for Westwark residents, priorities for people experiencing homelessness, priorities for veterans. There are special veterans vouchers, VASH vouchers for veterans who are homeless that they can apply for. There's special, um, mainstream vouchers for people with disabilities, um, and individuals experiencing homelessness. So when the federal government comes out with additional vouchers, um, again, Steve's at the table. Um, and I'm sure he'll be willing to put in.
I do wanna point out, I know Warwick, Hardig Road, that development over there. Their waiting list is very sparrow points, sparrow.
Yeah, they're all long. It takes through the ten years.
Their waiting list is a lot less.
Yeah.
I've seen people get in there in less than a month by putting their names in. And I I, you know, and again, it's affordable.
Yep.
I I just wanna point out, people are flocking Warwick to go to East Greenwich. And I think Warwick's starting to get some vacant space, and we're talking about Kent County.
Yeah.
Advocates might wanna look into that at Hardig Road.
Yeah, all right. Well, thank you for letting me speak.
Thanks, Michelle.
Thank you.
How you doing? Don Cody, ninety-four Shippey Ave. First and foremost, I'm a father to a little girl. I own a multifamily home. I've lived in this town for ten years and owned that home for over two years. I'm also a youth boxing coach in this town, and I've done that for the past six years. I've dealt with a lot of troubled youth. But at the end of the day, I'm very passionate about this town. My family roots run deep. Uh, the DiCaprios, my mother's side of the family, have resided in this town since the eighteen hundreds. In the past ten years of me living in this town, I see more businesses close their doors for good. At one point, I saw the town gazebo become a drug den. The homeless population has become bigger, residing in encampments that are filled with litter and drug paraphernalia located in our local woods. All while our property taxes continue to increase, town rents continue to rise. My elderly tenant made the kind mistake of giving a woman a couple dollars who approached her while she was hanging out on her porch. That woman began to continue to walk by the house and harass her every time she was outside, to the point she didn't feel comfortable going out on her own porch anymore. Because of that, the woman started, you know, to stay in the house a little bit more. The woman ended up going to her door one day. Luckily, her son was there. Answered the door and told the woman to stop harassing his mother, or he was gonna call the police. The woman eventually did stop coming by, and we installed cameras on the doors. The, my tenant's son described the woman as an addict. A lot of the residents of the town have similar stories and experiences. I myself have caught people cutting through my yard, littering on my property. Uh, the people of West Warwick don't feel safe anymore at the end of the day. Recently, I heard of the homeless encampments close to Horgan Elementary School. And that hits, uh, that hits home, because my daughter attended Horgan for a little while. And, uh, hearing how school employees were scouring the schoolyard for needles, pipes, lighters, drug paraphernalia to make sure the children are safe. Me as a parent and as any other parent, we would do anything to protect our children. They come first, okay? And I I'm pretty sure everybody would agree with me on that. But when we're, when our kids are in school, they are in the hands of the school and it is a school's job to protect them. So I appreciate the fact that school employees are scouring the schoolyards, looking for drug paraphernalia, but they shouldn't have to. But clearly, it is necessary when you have encampments or rocks throw from where children are attending school and children are at play. And let's be real for a minute, let's call a strike a strike and a ball a ball. Most of these people in these homeless encampments aren't families or people that fell on hard times. Yes, some of them are. But the majority of them are people who made bad choices. The majority of them are people with drug addiction and people with severe mental illness and people with criminal backgrounds. These people should not have encampments right near schools. If, God forbid, a child gets stabbed with a needle on school school grounds because an employee happened to miss one, the people who are for letting these homeless encampments stay in such a proximity to where children attend school should have to answer to the parents. As a parent and a taxpayer in this town, I am expecting immediate movement of these encampments away from all elementary schools and playgrounds. I live in Westwark, I don't even bring my daughter to playgrounds in this town because of how disgusting they are. You go to the playground, you find empty nips all over the place. And drug paraphernalia, who wants to bring their kid to play? I have to leave the town to bring my daughter somewhere to enjoy a day out with her? So anybody who sympathizes with this, I get it. But at the end of the day, if anybody thinks these encampments should stay near the schools, maybe if a child does get hurt at one of these schools, maybe the people that feel that they should stay should maybe welcome them to their yard or their home, okay? Because they should not be within school proximities. They shouldn't be there. All right? Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Stan Tabak, um, Twelfth Generation Street, Westwark. There are, we're talking about the same thing, but there are two venues. Okay, you talk about the behavior, okay? A lot of these people can be homeless, can't find housing, it's the behavior. Jason, I've mentioned this many times at this meeting, when we had some people down at some area in Westwark, he was able to single, not single-handedly, but he helped about four or five people out of that, a lot of people homeless there. These were people who were willing to help themselves to get out of this situation. That's kind of what Father was speaking about. We're also very close bringing some more low-income housing in Westwark, which probably will get passed out of the Development Commission with Shama. None of these people down there would qualify for that housing. You can't smoke in the building, you can't be doing drugs, you can't do any of that stuff. None of them would qualify for that housing. They need some other type of thing. People, so the the low income is another situation. The homeless with the low income is another situation, and people who wanna get out of it. But the people who are bad behavior, what was the response to Father? I can do any, I'm freedom, I can do whatever I wanna do. But he said he can't do it on my property. That's the attitude, that's the problem. That's what the gentleman over there is talking about. These people are doing bad stuff, they're dangerous, most of them are drug addicts, they're alcoholics. And the problems too, that's another type of service they need. And you gotta put them somewhere else. They're not gonna qualify for low. Oh, it's not a housing problem down there, it's not a housing problem. And again, whatever's offered for low housing, they would not qualify for it.
Um, I I wanna just kind of reiterate, re- reiterate what Michelle was saying. You all have been really patient. This is what, three years, maybe even four? Um, Michelle and I presented with the, um, when I was still in the Health Equity Zone. We actually have an action plan. Um, part of that action plan was the three things that are necessary to address housing. And that's, um, capital, operating and services, and that's permanent supportive housing. That's what Michelle was talking about. We presented it here. Um, there have been some opportunities to address some of these issues. And unfortunately, because of the way the system worked, um, the Navigation Center was not an option. Um, but there is still that option on the table. I do wanna speak to one thing, um, and only because I just feel it's really necessary. Because I kind of get a little knot in my stomach when people talk about addiction. I'm a person in long-term recovery. I've been in recovery for twenty-one years. I'm formerly incarcerated, I'm formerly homeless. I went to the church in this town because my family's from this town. But luckily, I moved to Warwick, and the parish that I went to, they helped me. I did my fifth step with the Catholic Church. It freed me from many things. But I think it's really important to remember that we're talking about mental health. People don't ask to have mental health conditions. We're talking about addiction. People don't ask to have an addiction. It is a medical condition. I do understand, though, that we need to have not not have needles for our kids in the schools. I don't disagree with that at all. I have kids, right? Like, I don't disagree with any of that stuff. There are harm reduction services. And there's also some stuff that's happening that I can speak on a, on a private level that unfortunately, there are other areas of the system that are being rocked right now besides just housing. Like, we have lost some, we have lost some services in your town right now as we speak. So yes, it is going to impact things. But I know from what I actually do for a living, which is overdose prevention, I will make sure that we get some resources out here immediately to address your encampments with the needles and stuff. That I can do. I have some power to be able to do that. I'm gonna get them out here right away, and I'm gonna get them out here on a regular basis.
So where do the needles come from, Kathy?
So it's probably, I I don't know, you can get them at a pharmacy, it could be needle exchange. But unfortunately, we don't have those services, are not here in your town right now. We, it's a long story, I don't wanna get into it publicly. But the services that we're here, that we're providing, the harm reduction services are not here at the moment.
So people can, so a pharmacy can just hand out needles?
You can buy them, yeah. People can buy needles, there's needle exchange. It's actually an evidence-based practice that obviously, I think you all know, came from, you know, to protect people from contracting AIDS and in passing AIDS along. It's, it is evidence-based, it is very, very important. But it's very important that we are also, that is, they are, the needle exchange happens so that the needles don't get left where they shouldn't be left. So, I mean, it it it, I just wanted to be honest about it, that if that's an issue, that is a public health issue. And I'm gonna make sure, because I do work for the state, I'm not, I'm here as Kathy right now, though, um, that I'm gonna make sure that we get some needle exchange out here and we start to try to go into those areas. I'll work with Wendy to find out exactly where this, the encampments are, where the areas are. I will see if I can get some outreach out there to address those issues now and going forward. But at the end of the day, the problem's not gonna go away. And I think you said that, um, uh, President, whatever you name, the Council President, I wanna call you David, but it's disrespectful, sorry.
He's been called worse.
But you said it, and and you're absolutely right, even if you try to remove people, guess what? They're just gonna pitch a tent somewhere else, in somewhere else, in somewhere else, in somewhere else. You can't just bulldoze your way out of it, you can't wrestle your way out of it. It's not gonna work.
If you're, like, I just wanna get this straight. So you're telling, you're asking people to move. They can refuse to move and just go pop up from the street to that street, leave the trash, leave the needles, leave everything beyond. But they are. So then they're gonna go somewhere else, but just, what I'm getting is you're saying it's okay and it's not.
No, I'm not saying that. I didn't say that at all. I said that we don't have any solutions. What the solution is in twenty-four-seven Navigation Center in the Kent County area.
Okay, but we don't have that right now.
Right.
But we still have, but we still have what we have. So.
What do you have?
It's almost like you're saying that this, they're gonna be there, this is gonna happen, and there's really nothing you can do about it.
No, I'm saying that we need to come up with solutions, and I think Michelle actually gave the solution. The solution is to have, develop some type of task force to start actually being actionable on the solutions. Because we've been talking about this for four years. Like, for four years, we've been talking about this.
But so right now, we're still in that situation where I have a lady calling me yesterday, saying I've had this, and crying on the phone to me.
Yeah, I cry a lot too, yeah.
But but it's not, it's not fair, though. I mean, she's she's done nothing wrong.
Mm-hmm.
She's approached people who are in her area, asking them to stop. These people are, and I don't wanna say the area, I don't wanna say the place, because
Mm-hmm.
they don't feel comfortable. So, but two men, she's done her homework on these people, as she told me. Um, one have has gotten out of the ACI, and the other one has. So now she's, now she's upset, lives alone, and was and felt threatened, told me she was threatened. She called the police, police came out right away. What is the police gonna do? Nothing, nothing, there's nothing they can do. Because they can do whatever they want. So we're putting the police in harm's way to go out to a situation. They have no teeth behind them, and that's where I'm getting that. This this is completely wrong. It's like saying people can do whatever they wanna do.
I don't know, I don't, I I hear you, but I'm not saying that people can do whatever they can, they want. I, and I'm not debating that. What I'm saying, though, is I wanna go back to.
Advocating for that, though.
No, I'm advocating for addiction right now. To be honest with you, I got up here because I heard a lot about addiction. And I heard a lot about, talking about addicts and drug addicts and all of that stuff. That's actually what I came up here for, because that's what I'm advocating for, is I am an addict, okay? If you really need to know. I hate even calling myself that, but I'm a person in recovery. And I didn't ask to be homeless, I didn't ask for all that. What I'm saying to you, Jason, and and I wanna leave this on a good note, is I don't disagree with you. I don't disagree with you that people should be able to do whatever they want and that the neighbors need to feel that way or that the kids that are in the schools. What I'm saying is, to the point of, we have to do something. You all are doing the best you can with trying to do something. That's why you're talking about it. It's not like you're sitting here saying, you know, but the answer is not gonna be to having, to to bulldoze encampments. It's not gonna be to put them in district court, because that costs more money. But, you know, like, that's just gonna actually, in the end, just cost more money. So I can give you a quick solution on trying to get some outreach out here, because that's under my purview. But I think that having that smaller conversation, continuing to have those conversations. And I actually, Ben had made some really good suggestions. Talk to the Leaker Cities and Towns, talk to Coventry and Warwick, they're right next door. That's where, that's what I said when I first came up here. Build a regional response to this, because it's not gonna go away unless there is something and somewhere for people to go. Housing could take years. I wish it was housing right now, but we have to have some kind of short-term solution. And you all have been on on board about all of this. We've been looking for property for how long now? Wendy literally gives lists of property everywhere she goes. And I keep saying, stay away from West Warwick, because West Warwick just is, you all are the most hide-a-burdened community in the Kent County area with the smallest, lowest landmass, that's the reality. But if you find a piece of property, I'd be extremely happy. And I'll help to raise it, raise up and and get the right people to talk to you, um, as I've done in the past. And I'm here to continue to do that. But Jason, I'm not saying that I think it's okay. That's not what I'm saying. What I'm saying is, I can only give you what resources are available, and the resources are pretty scarce across all of Health and Human Services, not just housing. It's a really tough time for everybody.
I think it's the hardest jobs to fill in the state, too.
It's tough times.
On the Human Services. I just wanna point out one quick thing, you know, I know the gentleman left, but, you know, yes, the school department is looking at all their playgrounds, but I wanna say the town playgrounds, whether it's Crompton, Flat Top, Natick, whatever. Jay and his crew, Jay is the supervisor down there, are monitoring these playgrounds a few times a day. Are they using resources to do this? Absolutely. Could they be doing something else? Absolutely. But I just wanna point out, they are making sure our playgrounds up at the Civic Center, wherever it may be, are safe for our families and our children numerous times a day, many times a week. So I just wanna point that out, that that is something that is going on. And I don't want people to feel unsafe to not be able to use our playgrounds. We are investing a lot of money in Crompton, and I know damn well that we're gonna make sure that it's safe for our families to be there. We spent a lot of money up on Top of the Hill. We we monitor it, we make sure it's clean and safe. So continued, I think the the biggest nip problem, I think, in area is on the Brookside, have playground. It's only the little swing set, but we are monitoring and and making sure that that is cleaned up on a daily basis.
But how come they don't get in Wakefield Street?
And Wakefield.
But how come they don't get them involved to clean it themselves? When they make a mess, tell them, get a bag, clean it, don't leave a mess alone.
We can't, we can't go to sites and say, I want you to go to the playground.
No, no, I mean, just get it, like we're doing now, tell them, you're living there, clean it up, there'll be no problem.
Actually, Wendy has done that on occasion.
Well, I know a lot of them.
Wendy has brought bags to the site and said, start cleaning.
Then I listen to Wendy, then I listen to anybody.
I had AA Equity Zone, I had a program there, I was doing AA. And, um, I had everybody do all kinds of different things, and they did it. You make them involved, get them involved, wanna do it. Don't say, because you made a mess, clean it up. Say, listen, you know, we can have a good environment, let's get together, make them feel important.
If you have up fifty people, you can go to Flat Top right now, because it's disgraceful down there.
I'm gonna do my best, I'm gonna have them, they're really good people, trust me, they will do it.
Thank you. Go ahead, Tom.
Hey, if I may from here, Tom O, Sixth Colonial Way, the folks that are looking for a piece of real estate. I made this comment, and I really didn't get any response about a few years ago. We have the Hollywood complex just a few miles away. I know it's in Providence County, but we have so many huge buildings that are boarded up. These grants, which are taxpayers' dollars, they're my dollars, they're your dollars, they're California's dollars, they're federal government dollars that belong to us. Get these grants to try to re-imperme, some of those buildings and make them habitable and have a roof over these sets. Some of those buildings are. They have a roof over these sets. Most of those buildings are four-story small. They're huge. They're boarded up. I know there's issues with asbestos, so on, but grant money can clean those buildings up and make them habitable. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Tom. State your name and address for the record.
Hello, everybody. My name is Jonathan Delgado, uh, 194 Coe City Ave. I am a resident of West Warwick. Obviously, I work with the West Warwick Health Equity Zone. However, I'm gonna be speaking on a personal capacity for tonight. I just want to touch up on like two important points that I felt kind of clarified the, the importance of making some housing developments. Uh, there was a piece by WPR that came out earlier this spring in which explained that housing in Rhode Island, even at a one-to-one ratio, meaning that if you build one single-family home and then you build one multifamily, it will take three years for the state of Rhode Island to get caught up in housing stock. Which means that folks that are looking for homes or an apartment are not gonna be able to do so, because unfortunately, due to the lack of, uh, market availability, it's just not gonna be there. The pricing is just gonna hold them off from getting into those spaces. And then the other one, which was, um, you know, speaking on a hypothetical about, should we proceed with this ordinance about the encampments and people going to jail? Um, there are currently, and this is the latest number I have, it could be different, 60 to 70 on house folks here in the town of West Warwick. Touching on the point presented early by Raya about the cost of incarceration. It is now up to between 120,000 to 140,000. Again, hypothetical. If any of these folks were go, all 60 to 70 were go to jail, I did the math really quick. On average, you're looking at 7.8 to 9.1 million taxpayer dollars that would have to be used. So all of us in this room, the rest of Rhode Island, that would be responsible for that bill. And that's just the 70 that are here. That's not to the extent of the rest of Rhode Island. On top of the fact that we're already paying for whoever's in the, um, ACI. So that's something that I, I felt is really important, because either way, which would, whatever plan we decide to go forward, our tax dollars are gonna be involved regardless. Unless we somehow, through your advocacy with state and federal representatives, are able to secure funds to develop some sort of permanent supportive housing the way, the way Michelle presented earlier. Which, and for which, uh, it's another thing, I guess, especially designated area would have to be developed. I know that, uh, coding and code enforcement, we have to get involved and develop plans around that, because, you know, it would be for very specific purposes. And I know the code in Rhode Island is very strict about what it allows and what it doesn't. And the last thing that I wanted to mention is, uh, the potential to explore or study the development of some sort of ti- uh, tiny home project, uh, pallet, shelter, or navigation center in the town. Because, um, it's been done in other communities. Uh, Vancouver, British Columbia, uh, the Houston, Texas, as well as, uh, two counties in the state of California develop tiny home projects, which were obviously developed with taxpayer money as well as federal grant money. But those are opportunities out there. We just need to put our heads together and really decide to, you know, do we want to sweep this under the carpet or, you know, do you guys want to meet here again? One year from now, still, you know, going around the bush and having a discussion that quite frankly, it's wasting our time and our taxpayer money as well. It's, you know, I'm, I'm relatively new to Rhode Island. I'm ha- very happy to call it home. I've only been here for about five years, but I'm happy that I landed here and I would love to continue to be here and call this, you know, the town of West Warwick my home. So thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Real quick. Go on YouTube. This, I saw this a bunch of months ago. Now Seattle's had probably the biggest problem almost in the country. And they're, you know, 10 times worse than what we have. And they, this whole documentary was about all the solutions that they were trying to come up with to solve this problem. And it's much bigger out there. And then at the last 15 minutes of the show, this is, well, there's one state that might have a solution. They're actually doing it right now. It was Rhode Island. Rhode Island had the solution that they were looking at. They have a program, I'm not very familiar with it. It's called Kodak with a C. It was based out of Providence. And there were two individuals they was focusing on. They get, they were having problems with drugs, all kinds of things, and anyway, they got arrested. They were put in the ACI. And they actually, several times, thanked them for arresting them, because, because of the Kodak program. They were able, they had a couple, a couple options to do when they were admitted. They could try this program or go about your normal stuff in the ACI. They chose to do this. And the program, a little bit I saw about it, they actually saved their lives. They got them jobs. They interacted back with their families. And it was right here in Rhode Island. You might want to check it out a little bit. It's Kodak with a C. And I don't know, and it's like, I was just stunned. Here I'm watching this thing all, all night. Rhode Island, you know, I said, you gotta be kidding me. So there are things that are out there that, to one point I want to make, they actually got arrested. They went through the program. And they kept on saying, if we didn't get arrested, we'd probably be dead right now. They wouldn't have lived another two or three years. So there's something that's going on over there. Interesting.
Thank you, Steve.
My name is Joseph Simis Jr., 35 Lockwood Street, West Warwick. I know everybody's talking in that, but the behavior of those people. Now, you guys are not gonna throw nips in flower bins or sit on the flowers when you're going to get a haircut. These people don't buy by the law. We have to do something at this meeting tonight. Been going on too long. Thank you.
John Reed, 62, knows everything. I think we've covered every possible scenario that you can go through. All right. Most of it, through my life in the industry, I've dealt with alcoholism, drug addiction. I took guys out of the ACI and work release. I used to bring guys to Kodak in Providence. I've covered the spectrum. Bottom line is, if people don't want to help themselves, and this is repeating it, that's not your job. You're never gonna help them. The only thing I see that this council job is tonight, as much as we all have empathy to fix the problem, unless the town of West Warwick wants to build a multi-complex that the housing is free, because these people aren't gonna afford affordable housing, because you need a job. You need a job. Because it's affordable, that doesn't mean you just grab the keys and here I am. So our housing situation, that's the state and the federal government, like Vinny said. I think our conversation was tonight is the safety of the townspeople, our town employees, our children. And you were very well on topic. I think I know where your head at is with this. We can't solve this problem. I don't think God can solve this problem. So our problem tonight is what are we gonna do to protect the people of the town? You need to come up with some, because we, we'll be talking about this till 30 years from now. I mean, everything that's been said here, it's like a recording. We've all heard it. We've all said it. I stood up here and I'm repeating myself again. I'm not good at that. I got, you know, some years of breath left. I want to save it. But as a council, can we please do something? You're not gonna save the world. It's not gonna happen. Save the integrity of the town. And my other concern is, and I think it should be the council's concern, we have talked about all these things that are happening on town property. If something catastrophic happens, which has already been mentioned, the inlets and outlets of some of these encampments is hard to get to, okay? It's well-known that everybody on the council, all our departments are fully aware of the hazards. If something catastrophic happens, who's gonna pay the bill? Because we knew it was gonna happen. I think that's something that needs to be thought about. Thank you.
Thank you, Jim. Paul Villa 15, Janet Drive. We're talking about homeless issues here. And one thing that's exacerbated this problem, and it's at a federal level, is that we've had an open border for three and a half years. We've seen it on TV. We've seen it on the news. Our government rents apartment complexes. They rent hotels. And they put up people who have jumped our border and broke our laws, all our veterans, and our homeless, stay on the street. Okay, so maybe it's time to stop pushing back the other way and saying, you know, start here. American citizens first, all right? They should not be given taxpayer dollars to people who come here illegally. I'm, I'm an immigrant fam, I, I'm a second generation here. My grandparents were immigrants. Like many other people, they had to get on a list. They had to do it the right way. There were no handouts. They had to have sponsors. They had to have jobs, period. Okay, I'm, I'm not gonna belate at this point, but it's exacerbating this issue. The, the numbers anywhere from 10 to 18 million have crossed the border. And unfortunately, they're being put all in these blue states because they're the ones taking them. All right, you're gonna see this in your schools. You're gonna see it everywhere else. And unfortunately, these poor people living along the rivers, and the veterans who serve this country that are living on the street, don't get home, don't get help, okay? But we help people who don't even belong here. Enough said on that. Again, if these were people sitting down in these encampments that were cooking a hot dog over a fire or, or were roasting a marshmallow, nobody would probably say anything, okay? But what we have here is somewhat of a double standard. You know, a- as we saw a woman up here earlier, as I sat in the back, with seven children, was trying to start a business, who, who didn't know the process, and you're helping her get through that. But you also did something while she was up here. You said, there's a process. There's things you have to do by ordinance that you haven't done, so you cannot open your business. All right, so you enforce the ordinance. The town manager mentioned that there was avenues, however be it slow they are, that if a homeowner doesn't do something that he's supposed to do with his property, we can write him a violation and send them to municipal court. All right, true. So that same homeowner, who's worked 16 hours today, can come home, pull his tax bill out of the mailbox, that he's worked 16 hours to pay, by the way. And in the same mailbox, he can have a violation from the town of West Warwick, because his grass was six or eight inches high, because he didn't have a chance to cut it, because he was working. Then, when he goes out to his back porch and wants to have a cold drink and enjoy his backyard, there's the tents. There's the homeless person stealing his electricity. There's the homeless person stealing his water. Okay? And we're being told nothing can be done about that? That's theft of utilities, all right? So the problem here is, this is not responsible behavior. If it was responsible behavior, nobody would probably be complaining, all right? And again, I have mentioned it before, is, you know, we heard about, whoa, we're gonna drop off shops container. I heard that a year ago, July, that they were gonna do that. And here we are, we're still having problems with the needles. We shouldn't have to have teachers sweeping playgrounds to make sure the playground is, is, is free of needles, okay? We, we should have responsible behavior, and we don't have it, you know? So there's, there's almost like a double standard here. The people who work, who pay the taxes, who pay their bills, have to abide by the law. But the people who don't do any of those things can get away with it. And I understand, this is a complex problem. I'm not trying to put icing on it. It's difficult. But I'm sorry, you know, the taxpayers who elect you, who pay the taxes in this town, okay, those are people that you need to be responsive to. And these are the people that are suffering. All the people should not have to be afraid to sit out on their porch, okay? Nobody uses the bike path. It's, it's useless. You know, I had a, a friend who, who took a ride down by the manor here. He was riding his bike and said, you know what? It's the last ride I'm taking down there. And he's, he's not a little guy. I mean, he's a good-sized guy, but they're all, they're all over the place down there, okay? So it's responsible behavior. We, we had this at the gazebo. Town had to close it last, a year ago Labor Day, after someone threw syringes all over the place. Had to clean it up. We had to pay to clean it. We had to pay to repair it at taxpayer expense. And now they're back. Okay, so where does it end? I mean, we either gotta stop enforcing all the ordinances for everybody and all the laws for everybody, uh, because this is, you, you can't be selective. Certain people can't get away with breaking the law while others have to abide by it. And, and it doesn't matter who you are. I don't care about political affiliations. I don't care about anything else. The law is the law for everybody, period. You break it, you should have the same penalties as anyone else. So I, I appreciate your time, and I just wanted to bring that to your, your, your attention. Thank you very much. Any other comments from the homeless before I move on?
Not everybody drinks, Caesar. I was a grown-up and drank.
Okay, thank you.
But not everybody does. I live in East Greenwich, and I got from my mama died. No, no, because I wanted to be homeless.
Thank you. Any other comments from the council discussion?
Since I brought this up to begin with, um, I, I want to state that I think as little as it might seem, we've advanced this conversation. And I think whatever side that, of this issue that you fall on, a lot of things were said tonight from both sides that were true and helpful. I also think that the immediate solution can involve everything we've discussed tonight. Whether that's creating a committee and a task force to develop plans to address this issue or doing something immediately to address the concerns of the citizens of the town. I think both can be true, and we should take some immediate action. While stepping back, getting our bearings, and doing whatever we need to do to address the issue as a whole, as much as we can as a town council and the people of West Warwick. We all know that this, this issue, and it's been stated many times, is greater than the town. It is countywide, statewide, nationwide. So my personal feeling is that we need to, um, and I'm, I'm ready to put forward a motion, if, if you guys are ready for that, uh, to address the issue immediately. While, again, on the other hand, doing all the things that we talked about tonight about the issue. Anybody else have anything?
What, what would that motion be?
Exactly.
Well, I think the motion needs to be, and again, the wording doesn't come easy, because the problem is not easy, but I think we need to, um, dissolve these encampments. We need to vacate them. We need to get them off town property.
I'll second that motion for discussion.
I have a motion and a second. Wait, did you say second for discussion of that?
Second.
How, how would that be done?
That would involve our police department. I keep hearing that the, the encampments will pop up wherever we remove them from, and I, I understand that. But, I understand that. But then they get moved again, and they get moved again, and they get moved again.
I'm not sure that's realistic, again, without having a full-blown plan as to how to handle it, including what Mark has talked about.
And again, I
Taking the personal property and doing, you know, all that stuff has to Taking the personal property and doing, you know, all that stuff has to be considered. And I don't know if the chief would agree, whether he has the manpower to do that. I mean, that sounds like it's a special...
Do you think at a certain point, these folks are gonna get tired of getting moved?
No, I don't.
No?
No. No, I don't.
Okay. Well, I made the motion.
So it's on table for discussion.
And again, we can develop a plan. But we also need to be very aware of the safety threats that exist to our citizens. God help us if a child picks up what I picked up at Flat Top on Friday and ingests it. We know about this problem, we know about it. To sit here and talk about plans that will take years is not the solution right now. God help us if a child dies because they picked up what I picked up on Friday. I don't want that on my head.
No, no doubt.
So I wanna go back just a little bit because I totally agree with the resident that came up here and not being near schools or playgrounds.
I do too.
So I can agree that these encampments should be moved, whether they're a thousand feet from a school or a playground at this point, until we come up with a plan to figure out how we're going to deal with this, because...
Because what if they, I mean, God forbid they move closer to the, I mean, I don't know how far, I don't know exactly what the distance is from Oregon to where the exact encampments are, you know? You think nine hundred feet from where the basketball courts are?
We have a motion up here.
No, that's why, and I'm...
Well, he's, yeah, yes.
And that's why I'm saying, my thought is to get them away from the schools and playground areas. Flat Top is less than five hundred feet, correct?
It's about fifty feet.
You know, we're talking nine hundred to a thousand feet.
Are there people still living there? Because I don't think it was ever cleaned up.
It wasn't, I have the picture right here.
No, but I mean, it wasn't cleaned up once people moved. That's my understanding.
I saw what appeared to be an encampment, and I saw a man come out of the woods.
Yeah.
So to me, that tells me.
So we're saying, moving so many feet from a playground or a school, you have two manors that are here. Are we gonna push them closer to the manors? No matter how you look at it, you know...
Closer to the river. Which could be dangerous for, not just the homeless, but also our guys too.
I just don't...
Just remember the dimensions of this town, once you take the river out, between churches, playgrounds, schools, you're gonna overlap no matter what. So if you say move a thousand feet, nine hundred feet, it's just gonna be closer to somebody else.
That's right, that's what I'm saying.
You either get rid of them in their entirety or work with them. But your motion is to seek enforcement, I believe, through the police department under the current ordinances.
Yes.
Okay. The ordinance that you're, I guess, moving tonight is not in right... I mean, there's gonna be a process by which that ordinance has to pass.
It's not passed yet.
No, no, what I'm saying is if it becomes an ordinance, but right now, you're really seeking enforcement of existing ordinances and laws.
I'm seeking the enforcement of whatever tools we have, and I'm not gonna pretend to know the ins and outs of every ordinance.
Oh, no, I don't mean the specific statutes that can be utilized by the police department, specific ordinances that can be utilized by the police department, and the fire and police. Is that what you're seeking to do tonight?
I'm seeking, if those are the tools that we have available, then yes.
Okay. So you have to take into consideration, again, like I said, the town is so small, plus where the river is, and with the locations of schools, churches, parks, playgrounds, et cetera, et cetera, athletic fields. No matter what you do, it's like that old adage about, you know, you can't have a bar within so many feet of a school. And Morse Work used to have bars all over the place. So how are you gonna do that? I mean, I just don't think it's logical to say five hundred feet, nine hundred feet, a thousand feet or fifteen hundred feet, because you're just gonna push it in.
So it's all or nothing, is what you're saying?
That's what I'm saying.
And that's, I never mentioned anything about schools or anything like that.
Oh, no, no.
In terms of that, my motion.
What I'm getting at is, it sounds like you just want, before you can put something into writing to address what you really wanna do along with the other items, about putting together a task force and some of the items that were discussed tonight, your immediate action would be basically enforcing current law.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Which is?
You wanna go right through chapter eleven, between trespass, vandalism, anything relating to, garbage, anything relating to health, health, safety, and welfare, anything that you do with human, you know, waste, health, safety, and welfare? You've got a million things that you could possibly arrest any of these people on. Whether or not those arrests are gonna come through with convictions, I can't tell you. But there are, under chapter eleven of the Rhode Island general laws, vandalism, you have nuisances, we have a same thing. Basically, they're mirrored in the ordinances. But again, you've already heard what's probably gonna happen when you arrest them. They're not going to jail. So once they're released, where they gonna come back to? Now, it'd be great to say you could put them on a bus and send them to Canada, but that's not gonna happen. So I'm just saying that, you know, the law of unintended consequences, it may work for a day, it might work for a week, but when they come back and they get out, where do you think they're gonna return to? Just throwing that out there. But there are statutes that you could address, and there are ordinances you could address.
Jeff?
I just wanna touch on a few things. Talked about Flat Top. We were up there Thursday, we're spreading, I don't know if you went all the way, there's a left, we're spreading wood chips that go down in there. We are gonna clean that area up, but it's been so wet, even though we've had three months of no rain, we can't get equipment down in there because it's been too wet, so we're spreading wood chips so we can get down in there to get the stuff and put dumpsters in there. So that will be done very shortly, I just wanted to give you a heads up on that. But I also wanna touch base with you guys on all the encampments that are out there. An average cleanup is three to four days, and we're talking five to eight thousand dollars.
I'm like, you're in?
Three to four days.
How many men?
Five to, probably anywhere between four to six. Five to eight thousand dollars. That's including the dumpsters and tipping fees. Now, we have anywhere between, what, you know, just the island alone down the River Point would probably take well over a month to clean up. And that's the truth. And that's not, so, we're not budgeted in my budget. Obviously, I didn't budget for that, so you're talking, you know, and if you had a private company come and do it, I know for a fact, just over to Thunder Miss, when they cleaned that up, was thirty thousand dollars to have a private company come and do it. So now you're also, we have to worry about accessibility to these places. So now you're talking more people to go in there and clean it up because that island, if you've seen it, we're not getting any equipment in there. It's close to the river, so I can't go in there and cut down trees to put dumpsters in there. So it's all gonna come out by hand. And it's all gonna come out to the Riverwalk by hand. We start cutting trees down to put dumpsters in there and bringing equipment in there, D E M will be all over so fast, you won't even be able to imagine.
So why is the D E M all over us now, with people being at the Riverwalk, all that trash?
I can't answer that question, I can't answer that. But I'm telling you, as a department head, I don't wanna bring that onto us to have D E M down there because we're cutting trees down close to two hundred feet from a waterway to put a dumpster in there to clean up these encampments. Now, I have no problem cleaning them up, I'll do whatever you ask me to do. But there is a significant cost to doing that. And with us doing that, we're also taking away from the stuff that we should be doing every day. So I just wanna make you aware.
I agree, you shouldn't be doing it at all.
No, I'm just saying, what I'm saying is, if we take...
That's a waste of our resources.
If I take five or six guys and put them down to that Riverwalk at that island for three or four weeks, that's five or six guys that I don't have on the road doing what should be being done on the road.
I understand.
And I'm not saying no.
Yeah, I understand what you're saying, but that doesn't change...
I'm saying, you have a legitimate reason to clean everything up, and I agree with you.
Like, that's gonna happen regardless.
But you have to look at the cost coming out of our budgets.
We don't have a choice not to clean it up.
No, no, and I agree with you a thousand percent. But you have to look at the cost coming out of budgets and also the lack of work that's gonna get done on roads.
And again, the behavior of these folks is what put us in this position. This position is not gonna get better if we just ignore it.
No, I agree, but five to eight thousand dollars per, and now that...
And if you wait a year, it might be triple that.
And I don't disagree, but it's a significant amount of money, and I have no problem cleaning them up. But it's gonna take time, and accessibility, there's a whole... It's not just go in there, pull everything out, and throw it away, that's just not...
It's unsafe.
And folks, this is...
It is unsafe, of course, of course it's unsafe.
So that's part of my point.
Of course it is.
It's unsafe for them to be with it.
Just the hill alone by, that David speaks about over on East Main. We were there, what, four days? We cleaned it up, we had help from the advocates, they did a fantastic job helping us, the volunteers. But we didn't even get to finish it, and then we had the flood in September, and they all moved from where the island was down by the Riverwalk, out over there, and we're back to square one again. So that was already cleaned up at one time.
If I could, just, just so there's, again, I still think there's a fundamental flaw in starting right now with a no trespassing for the reasons I said. I think, you know, we need to clean that up before we enact it. And this, my intent is, when this is done, to have all those side things, like the director just mentioned, the side effects on what the different things we need to think about and consider to make an educated final decision. But I think as, in order to do something now, I think I would recommend that we put together, back in the day when Chief Levine and I were young patrolmen, we had municipal court details. And that was to curb some bad behaviors that were going on at that time. And it was funded through the court. Obviously, I've already mentioned that this isn't gonna fund itself through municipal court, and I don't think the enforcement of it will be overly effective. But I think what we probably should do is, and it would, since the manpower isn't there, we'd be sending people into kind of remote areas so they're not gonna be able to be working active patrol and be able to run back to their cruiser to go handle whatever else is going on in town. That we probably need to set up a group, and I'd meet internally with these folks should you select to do it, is we probably need to establish, I mentioned a task force before, but this is not really, it's more of a response team of a few law enforcement officers, paramedic and folks, DPW, so they can, a DPW boss or foreman to help so they can kind of assess each encampment, and somebody, you know, a few people from the communities that represent thrive or housing, and go, and we'll set it up like a municipal court detail where they're going out, because we have to do that generally in four-hour blocks, where whether we're doing it daily or kind of on a sporadic schedule to go visit those, enforce what we can enforce, give warnings for what we can give warnings for, and be a visible presence to discourage the poor behaviors and encourage the cleanup, if you will, while we're out there. Maybe we can make some headway while we're working towards making the ordinance, strengthening it for what you're ultimately seeking if we get that far. But I think that, you know, obviously, ordinance takes two readings, twenty days to be effective.
So, I don't wanna cut you off here, Mark, but when you say it's flawed, how long before the flaw goes away? In other words...
I mean, this is only my opinion, you could have legal...
No.
I think, I don't think...
I'm listening to what you're saying here, but you're saying it's flawed, right? And I'm not disagreeing or agreeing, right? I'm just saying, you're saying it's flawed, and ultimately, you're saying that, you know, these ordinances or this ordinance, encampment ordinance, or whatever ordinance you're looking to do here would address these issues and get us where we want to be. But with that said, is this gonna be a six-month flaw? Or can this be something, let's just say, we wanna say December first?
I think if legal counsel agrees, again, I think the flaw in the using the curtilage of the river and us interpreting that as fields and playgrounds for that statute to be effective, I don't interpret it that way. I would have a hard time enforcing that. So I think that, at the very least, should be considered and amended to adding a comma and adding town property to it. At least it's not playgrounds and fields, it's town property.
Camping's recreation, it's camping.
Whatever it is, we don't have an anti-camping ordinance. We have a field and recreation thing that says you can't be there after dusk.
It's not camping if you're trespassing without a permit. It's not camping. No, the actual act of camping, your intention, sure, but it's not camping in a recreational mode because normally you have to go get a permit, and you can go to a place that camping is allowed. You just can't trespass on property and still call it camping.
So you're illegal to be there.
Excuse me?
So it's illegal to be there.
That's why it's called trespassing. But the point what I'm getting at is, and Mark has alluded to it, town council does not have control over the judiciary in district court and/or superior court. And your municipal court isn't made to put people in prison or to incarcerate them for the acts that they've done under the jurisdiction that they have. So even though at this level, you say, "Okay, this is what we're gonna do," great. You're gonna arrest them, great. Let's say the municipal court group or task force or whatever you wanna call it brings in, I don't know, half of the alleged number of homeless in one night. Forty-five people get arrested. They're not going to Cranston, they're not gonna go to the A C I. They're gonna be brought to the district court, and they're gonna be let go. They're not gonna be held. Where do you think they're gonna come back to? They're not just gonna say, "Oh, you know something, Morse Work doesn't want us anymore, let's go in there against it." That's not gonna, that's not gonna happen.
Let's extrapolate that. What happens the next time? They come back the next day.
Again, they get arrested, now they become a bail violator, let's say, okay? Now that judge who is sitting there is gonna have to put this person in jail. Unless, of course, I mean, I'm not saying about those individuals that have committed a crime and that there's a contact and there's an incident report, and then there's an arrest, like an assault or anything to do that's illegal. Just by virtue of the fact that you're a trespasser, nothing else, nothing more. And again, the Supreme Court has said that it's not illegal for towns to enforce these ordinances. I'm just telling you, in the district court, unless there's something else, unless there's some type of assault, some type of malicious damage to property, something else besides homelessness, vacancy, camping, whatever you wanna call it, I don't think any district court judge or superior court judge is gonna be apt to put that person in prison, even if they violate their bail. They're just not gonna do it. Because theoretically, you're being locked up or being homeless. Now, if there are other crimes, again, getting to your issue of behavior, you're absolutely right. Those people will be prosecuted, and those people will be locked up. But out of the seventy, eighty, a hundred people, again, as we had the discussion a couple of meetings ago, I mean, those same type of people live in homes in our neighborhoods now. So those people aren't gonna get, you know, they're not gonna be put in jail. I mean, you guys are in a position right now because it's not on town property. You're the landlord that needs to evict these people. They have nowhere to go. So you're gonna look to the courts to say, "Handle this problem for us, incarcerate them." And I'm saying to you right now, you don't have control over that situation. You don't have control over the judiciary, saying that because this person's homeless, hasn't committed any other crime, but being homeless, and maybe, okay, he didn't take care of his trash. I don't think that person's gonna be incarcerated. Now, if they do incarcerate them, great. Seventy, eighty, ninety people that you have right now, there'll be a new group coming in. So this thing's gonna still keep going on while we're trying to put together a task force to address all of the issues that were spoken of tonight. Because again, last week, last month, last year, these ordinances and statutes were still on the books. And that hasn't done anything to affect the issue of homeless in Morse Work or our other communities. So again, I'm just trying to figure out what you're looking for tonight is enforcement of what's going on right now. And that is gonna be directed to the police, fire, and rescue, if that's what's gonna happen. If I misspoke, let me know.
No, that's accurate.
Hit me if I'm wrong, but this, I mean, you kind of dealt with this a little bit, I think, when Pulaski, there's like an eviction process that would... I mean, I know you were able to get them into homes, but there's an eviction process that has to happen, right?
The eviction prop is, when you have a private prop...
No, no, but that wouldn't have been the town, but the people that own that land would have to do it. The same thing would happen here, where the town would have to do an eviction process.
No, you don't, you can't evict on a trespass. They're breaking the law. They're trespassing.
That you you may be right in theory, but I still.
It's not like a squatter moving into a house that's been foreclosed on and people left. That's a complete different issue. When you have people that are living on town property, there's no landlord tenant, there's no act, there's no lease. You're trespassing. Leave.
Even if even if they've been there for so, I mean, I'm just asking, I mean.
There's no, there's no squatters rights.
Cause it's because it's town property.
It's town property, right? So. But again, I think that the issue of the task force incorporating a lot of the ideas that we talked about tonight is a great idea. But right now, as it stands, um you know, unless you catch, I mean, for example, the needle situation. Unless you catch somebody illegally having a needle or illegal, you using um uh legal narcotics. That person, even though they might be using drugs, using illegal drugs, isn't gonna get arrested for that particular crime unless he gets caught in the act. So the police get there and say, okay, who's got needles? Everybody does this, not me. Or I get needles for legitimate, legitimate reasons. That I purchased at CVS because perhaps I'm a diabetic. And I don't have any place to throw my garbage away, so we threw it over there. And then. Whatever happens, happens. The police get there and they're gonna try to put together, I guess, a crime scene, but it's gonna be very difficult. And that's gonna be expensive too, because the more police you put towards these types of things. They're the same police officers that are not gonna be working for the rest of the taxpayers on their normal uh patrols.
So I I actually, I I think that. What Mark has suggested, if indeed, it sounds like it's been used before. And having a group, I do believe it's not just the police going in. I think you do have to have. Community partners helping out. I think you do have to have EMA. I think you do have to have DPW. Those are the people that sat around the table on Monday as well. That that has to continue and has to grow. If you can start something like that and work on strengthening the ordinances at the same time, I think that puts us in a lot better position. And. They at least, we at least are sending a message that we're not gonna tolerate the bad behavior and the bad actors.
Already sent that message, that's that's the only.
No, 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 by by arresting them. If the if those bad, if if you can, if you can. Tim has seems to think that that will be a difficult thing to prove in many cases.
Not not the arrest part of it. The arrest, the arrest part is easy. Taking the person in is easy. Mark, uh manager alluded to the fact that. Uh the the longer that person's held, the town's gonna have to take care of their property, which might cause another issue. But I'm just talking about the the other end, where you have a judge and a prosecutor. Prosecutor may say, Judge, we want this person incarcerated. I think it's gonna be hard pressed unless there's something else, there's some other crime for that judge to imprison this person only for being homeless. So right now, if there's a, again, hypothetically, if there are seventy homeless people right now, and thirty-five or fifty percent of them are committing crimes. Where are the residents contacting the police? For these particular incidents, so they can go out, investigate and make arrests. I'm sure from what uh Chief Levine said a couple of weeks ago. That there when there are their legitimate problems and they are notified, arrests are made in these encampments. And so that's been going on. I don't think you're gonna be able to go in there and say, okay, all seventy people line up, you're gonna get arrested. Okay, what do, first off, what do we do wrong?
Trespassing.
Trespassing, okay, oh, we're gonna, let's go to, let's go to, let's go to, let's go to the district court and see what's gonna happen. And the judge is gonna say, are you kidding me? These people are homeless. They need help. They need X, Y, and Z. If there are other crimes, don't get me wrong, they're gonna be prosecuted. For homeless that itself, I don't think they're gonna be incarcerated. And they're gonna be letting loose, maybe with another court date. Bail's gonna be PR, because they don't have anything. They're gonna come right back here and you're gonna start all over again. And again, every time you start over again and do it again and again and again. Your budgets don't have the money to take care of all that. And as as uh uh you know, Jeff said.
Money for the cleanup.
I understand that, but the first thing you're gonna do is remove the people, then you're gonna do the cleanup.
Like they have more power than the town council.
Well, again.
So I guess what I'm proposing is, it's almost like making our encampments a patrol beat. With a a smaller team than what I think would would take if a decision's ever made to. Wholesale remove encampments. To go out there, visit, enforce what is enforceable. Send more appropriate messaging, encourage. The good behavior and the cleanup as we work towards the ultimate goals. At at least, at the very least, it's. Doing something. Uh it'll be, you know, costly for some overtime and some responses. You know, some of that other stuff I already mentioned will will come out of it. Um but it won't be. The wholesale version of a directive to go remove everything. All at once.
And just just to make sure, the distinction is known by this council, any person walking onto private property, walking into a shed and stealing propane gas. Is gonna be prosecuted. Because that's not being homeless. That's that's being a criminal. Um somebody does something to a person on their own property where they bothered them, that's not being homeless. That's back to your behavior issue. They should be arrested and they should be prosecuted for bothering that person. Dave, I think you said it, if there was no garbage. They minded their own business and they left us alone, this wouldn't be such a big deal. If the town and all the uh advocates can assist in the cleanup of that, uh maybe that'll help. But notice will be sent out by this particular um uh group of police officers. And they're saying, listen, we're we're watching, and if you violate the law, we're gonna arrest you. And if you you're gonna act based upon your own behavior, that's gonna result in an arrest. And now we're gonna go to court with something more than just being homeless, and that judge will lock you up. Now, don't get me wrong, there are gonna be people in that homeless encampments that are gonna wanna get locked up for the winter time, because they're gonna go inside, they're gonna have a place to sleep. And they're gonna, they don't, the cost benefit analysis going to prison doesn't make a difference, because they're gonna be fed, they'll get, they got medical care and all, a place to sleep. So.
One of the concerns I have, kind of what Jeff, not sure what he was alluding to, but what I took out of it is. Right now, we we move them from the campsites. And we clean that up. Okay, great, it's cleaned up. It cost us twenty-five thou- I'm just throwing money out. Twenty-five thousand dollars to clean that up. But they moved down to Natick, behind the ball field. And they now do the same exact thing. Well, great, we got East Maine looking beautiful, but now we got Natick that we have to clean up. Now, we're just pushing expenses down the road. And we've seen it. You've seen it, you've seen it, you've seen it, and you've seen it. These encampments. Never stay clean, no matter where they go. So. You know, we can use the old term kicking the can down the road. You know, but that's why I was looking at this, when when Mark says this flaw, he's looking at. You know, what we can do, you know, and there's already ordinances in place, we've pushed that. Down the road too, we've talked about that, there's already ordinances in place. But I I want our police chief. A fire chief and our town manager to feel comfortable that what we're about to do is not gonna put the town at risk also. I mean, we're we're at risk in other ways already, but what what other risks are we open the town open to? That's why I, you know, I know, like, I've heard the dates, October first, November first, throughout December first. You know, what what is it that, you know, if we take action here tonight? I I think, you know, based upon what Mark said, tw- two readings. Twenty days to enforce, that puts us somewhere in November, December, which is amazing, like, it's already there, right? But. I'm all for that, you know, setting a date. But I don't think a one week or a two week date is feasible. You know, we talk about, we're going, you know, Jay, you threw this out there earlier, we're going around and around and around, but if we set a date. And a feasible date, sixty days or ninety days, just like, you know, I I know you say it's not an eviction, but. To me, it's an eviction, because some of these people, some of these people have made this.
The the police department provided them with notice by going to these encampments, like the the manager said, as a beat. And provide them with notice that you are going to be removed. We're give, we're giving you notice of that. We're not telling you you're gonna be arrested for sleeping or camping and not committing other crimes. But you will be removed, and we're giving them enough notice. Now, the response is probably gonna be, where are we gonna go? And they, those offices aren't gonna be able to answer that question.
I do know, in in circumstances, some of them were probably private property, and I know I've had conversations with Wendy about this, when notice, and I'm not saying whether I am in favor or not. No, I'm just saying, when you tell them we're gonna have to leave by a certain date, I know a lot of them do move. I know that Wendy had a problem with a private property, where somebody just kind of, whoever it was, took their stuff and destroyed it, and they didn't get their stuff. The the stuff may not mean a lot to us, but it is all that they have, and they they don't want their stuff destroyed. So I do think that. Again, I'm not sure how we go about it, if we decide to do that. I think a lot of them would move. Would they all move voluntarily? No, I think some of them would, some of them would. Would they, would they just move down the street? Um probably, very likely, would they just move over behind the manor? Would they move to Natick? Would they move somewhere else? I mean, I but. I think it's almost sure that that would happen. Does that mean we shouldn't do nothing? No, I'm not saying that either, but. And 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 the going in circles part isn't, is 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 because we don't really have a lot of, a lot of options.
So if I may.
I I I'm in a situation right now on South Street, where two residents who rent or own the home, whatever it may be. Are allowing people to come stay in their yard. People have complained to me, said, there's nothing we can do, it's private property. They have, the homeowner has to take care of it. The landlord has to take care of it. The town cannot take care of it. Town cannot go on private property. And remove them from the property. The town can go in on town property and have them removed.
And I'd have a, and I would have a valid concern with our police and fire. Again, I'm not saying that that isn't the choice that we make as a council, that we make the choice. I would have concerns with, it is not a safe environment down there for anybody to live. It's also not safe. For our guys. And if they're going in there to deal with medical emergencies or crimes, I get it. If we're going in there to remove people. Just a lot of things that could go wrong, if if, and again, I'm not saying we shouldn't do it, if if that's what you guys decide. But it should be, there should be a game plan, if that is, again, if that's what you decide, there should be a game plan that that involves. Police, fire, DPW, if, again, if that's what you do, I just don't think.
So, if I may, let's let's, again, remember that I I feel. Everything should be done. We should create a task force or a committee and work on the solution long term. But we still need to take care of the taxpayers now. So if if this makes everybody feel better. Two meetings in twenty days puts us at November fourth, if I did that correctly. We act tonight with the date of November fifth. Because then we will have had our two meetings in twenty days, where the language is better on those ordinances. So we can prepare those ordinances for the next meeting, for the first reading. And then we'll have the second reading. And by the time we reach the date that we set tonight to clear these encampments out, we've got the teeth of the ordinances behind us. That is not the concern of the taxpayer. It's not. I'm sorry to say that. It's not the concern of anybody sitting out there that's paying taxes in this town.
I I would actually think that on top of that, a more immediate action is, as Mark suggested, having a beat. To handle the encampments right now. Start it tomorrow. And I don't know if you can do that or not, but.
Probably be Friday, but.
I think.
To to start tomorrow, or Friday, or whenever. To have a beat.
Like a police, like a.
But that also has potentially community partners that can go in. Um I don't know who else you would, I would think that it should be.
I already, I already.
Yes, yes, I I I think that's a.
Community paramedicine.
I think that's something that we can do immediately and should do immediately, so. I would charge the, I would suggest we charge the town manager with that.
And a follow up with Ca- with Kathy, with this, the the needles, I think is also should be a very high priority, like immediate priority to make sure. That there's.
I agree.
So if the language of the ordinances is the the tripping point here, then what's wrong with what I just suggested? We we will have that behind us by the time that date is met. Or is that not the real issue? Are we just talking and talking? What are we doing? Are we acting or are we talking?
I think we have to ask who's gonna draft the ordinance, what the timeframe is.
What what is already law or is already statute or is already ordinance? The manager's concern is the.
Oh, no, I understand.
Doesn't include town property as a whole.
No, I understand.
That's a parks and.
Versus town property is a distinction.
Right.
That could be fixed very simply. The other question I have is, you wanna, you wanna result, and you want a pathway to get to that result. Correct?
Yeah.
Okay. If the pathway based upon some of the the questions the manager has about specific town properties, where it's. You know, a school versus a park, versus an athletic field, versus just town property that the town owns, because. Somebody just left it, we got it because of, you know, the no tax sale, it's just gonna turn over to the town. Those can be changed very simply in the ordinance, but as far as the enforcement of what we already have, I don't think you really need to create. Some new multifaceted law that encompasses everything with homelessness, because most of this stuff's already here. Now, either a couple of new things, sure, but there's not, I mean, for the most part. You know, the normal, regular, everyday crimes that exist between people, that doesn't need to be changed. But as far as what the town is gonna do regarding a distinction between being homeless, sleeping on town property. Whether it's an athletic field, a park, recreation, or anything like that, versus committing crimes, like you said, with behavior, that could just be cleared up a little bit. You know, you're not, you're not gonna be able to hide behind the fact that you're homeless to protect you from the enforcement and prosecution of normal crimes.
Right, but part of that. Goes beyond just sleeping on town property.
Oh, I understand that. No, no, I'm just using it as an example.
The damage they're doing to town property.
Right, but that's that's already in the statute for malicious damage or vandalism.
Right, and and I think that's what we stand on, should this go to court, not the fact that they're trespassing.
No, 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 I I understand that. If there if there's a crime to attach to the homeless person that's being arrested. An assault, a drug charge, uh public intoxication, disorderly conduct, that's different.
Right.
Than just being homeless.
Right.
Okay, that's what I'm trying to get at.
Right. But I think we're already past that bar of just being homeless.
Well, no, I, no, I I get that.
In almost every instance.
What I'm saying is, that's already in this book and it's already in the ordinances. You just have to enforce it.
Okay.
You wanna tighten up the language about where town, what type of, type of town property we're talking about. Is the council gonna want a distinction between the river, the riverfront versus the athletic field? Or is everything gonna be treated the same? That's what we're getting, that's what we're gonna get.
Again, I think we do it all.
Well, I I, we're not gonna, we're not gonna avoid any particular part of property. But again, schools, we know are different than parks, parks are different than next to the river.
I mean, in a greater sense, we do everything that we just discussed here tonight.
Exactly.
Everything, including immediate action and then the long term.
Sure.
The long term.
So we'll, we'll put, we'll put together something, you guys can review it, and then the first reading, you know, have at it, and then by the second reading, it should be okay.
Can you, can you give that to us through email when that's done, so we can?
We can try to get it done as quickly, quickly as possible, but I meant, every time you keep expanding things, you keep changing things, it's gonna delay you getting.
It's not a change, it's more of like understanding the wording of it.
Right, but again, if I give you, if I, I can, I can give you this book, and you're not gonna understand it. You know, because there's just too much to read. What we're gonna try to do is break it down as simply as we can, based upon current ordinances, current statutes. As it relates to everyone, and then kind of formulate that around the fact of the additional fact pattern of being homeless.
Whatever you do, you just give it to us.
Oh, absolutely, sure.
Okay, what you put in it? You know, just so we have time.
Yeah, absolutely. So one of the, another reason I must wanna point this out, that I was looking at pushing it out to December first, was. As the winter months do come, hopefully, some more shelters do open up this year. And it gives them the opportunity to, they they know they're not staying, that they have to be out by December first. That they may take those opportunities to go to those shelters. And it gives us time to work on this.
Well, if you wanna put a date on it, I am fine with that. You can make it November first, November fifteenth, December first, January first. I don't care, but I think we need to put something down tonight, that this is going to happen. Because if we don't, we have done nothing except sit here for three hours and kick the canter out.
And I think people that are working with the groups that are out there, need to let them know this is going down.
Well, and again.
Going over this tonight.
Again, we have, if we, if we put this beat in place. With that beat and the advocates, they can start working on spreading that news. And it gives them sixty, seventy days, right? Today's what, the seventeenth, eighteenth? Gives them seventy days, basically, to try to figure it out. And let's face it, not everybody's gonna figure it out. We know that. So, and and and, but I also want to point out, when, I'm not gonna say yet, I'm gonna say when they move to, I'm not, I'm not worried about that.
I mean, that's, that's, that's about, that's gonna be a real reality.
I'm gonna say.
That's a real thing.
I'm gonna say when.
ACLU.
Yeah. When they move to somebody else's property and whatever it may be, just remember when it's on private property, there's not, there's no enforcement that we can put in there.
So.
Unless a crime was being committed.
Correct.
Like anybody else.
Yep, but that, again, we saw it on Pulaski Street. The property owner did not do anything for how many years? And really didn't do anything. Other people got involved and bailed that individual out, basically. I want to say that publicly. The town bailed that individual out because that individual did not take their improper actions. The town had to go in and the advocates had to go in and say, you have to leave. And where'd they end up? East Main. So I just want to point out, when they say you have to leave, they may end up back on Pulaski because it's private property. Just pointing that out.
That's not my issue, that's the issue of the private.
Your board, I'm, I'm pointing out.
That's the issue of the private owner. And then if there's an issue, then they can deal with either Chief Levine or, or our, uh, minimum housing can deal with that.
So I still suggest we take action tonight. Put a date on it and then we clean up the ordinances between now and that date.
Can I make a suggestion? Sorry, Wendy Bujo, thirty-four Pataxat Terrace.
No.
No, not yet.
Please state your name.
Right.
Wendy Bujo, thirty-four Pataxat Terrace, West Warwick. Um, I, I think that we should do this whole beat thing and just walk through, I'd be happy to walk through with you. We can talk with the folks that are in the camps. Um, I talk until I'm blue in the face every day. I, I help clean up these camps, I bring them basic needs, whatever it is. They know that this has been talked about at town council, like, I just feel like you need to come down there and you need to see. I've been down there with Chief Verone plenty of times, with Ernie, with Mark. We've walked through these, these places. You haven't seen them all.
So how long have you been doing this? How long have you been talking to these folks?
What, three, four years now?
Years.
Yeah.
How much better has it gotten in three to four years?
So people are housed. People have been, um, through detox, still clean and sober. Um, but the difference is that they have a roof over their head.
Okay.
And they had, there was that grant funding after getting out of detox for sober living or, you know, what, they finally got their section eight voucher because their acuity score, um, um, with, with CES was up really high, whether they had physical.
Explain what that, the acuity score, I'm not familiar with that.
It, it's just, you know, like if you're an older adult, if you have mental health issues, what your physical issues are, you know, like if, if you have a heart condition, like they'd rather not have you sleeping outside. I mean, so right now, like I have, you know, a, a single woman and a four-year-old asthmatic child, and I cannot get her help. I've called every organization, I'm working with the coalition, there's no help. Like, the only help is, you know, sign your kid over to DCYF, whatever it may be. And like, that's not gonna happen. Somebody just fell on hard times, they actually work for a cap agency. Like, this is bad. I'm about to be evicted in about two months, my property is going, the property is going up for sale. I'm not gonna be able to afford to move, I don't make three times the rent, I don't have an eight hundred credit score, like, I'm not. I mean, I'm gonna be the queen of the squirrels at this point, it's what they call me, like, it, housing is impossible right now. And unless you bought a house ten years ago, you're not getting anywhere. You're not getting anywhere. So, I mean, I invite you to come down, like, let's, let's all go together, let's have a chat with these folks, let's clean it up. Um, I have grandchildren, I have children that went through the school system, like, I don't want them playing at the playgrounds. But like, honestly, was there really a needle at Horgan? I, I almost highly doubt it. Because they are responsible. There is a needle exchange box at Thunder Miss, they do have Sharps containers. But unfortunately, I can't hold their hands and we have a shortage of outreach workers. We have a shortage of case managers, we have a shortage of housing vouchers and. So yeah, we need the state to come in, we need the legal cities and towns. Um, Vinnie had mentioned that we're reestablishing the interagency council to end homelessness. Super important because it's more federal funding that's gonna come our way and not affect our taxpayer dollars. We can't keep doing these cleanups. I've, I have one encampment that wants a dumpster, it's in a bad spot, but they want to clean it up themselves. I just haven't asked because we're not done with the, with the last one. Um, but folks are, we're cleaning that up on their own. So like, if you're at Flat Top Park and you see that there's bags lined up, it's, they were working on it themselves, other folks who, who had previously lived there. Like, and so the mess that you speak about, trust me, I know. Um, I cleaned that up once, if you notice, there is bags, only they've been empty. Because people are going through them because they've been there for so long. Um, that person's incarcerated, like, he's not, he's not around, he was a hoarder, he had a drug problem. I'm just gonna go out there and say, like, it's gotta stop. Because we can't keep doing this. And, and the money that's wasted is absolutely ridiculous on these cleanups. So I think like with all of us going down and having these conversations about, we know there's a housing crisis, we know there's a need, we know you're suffering down here, like, help us help you. You know, and that, that's really what it comes, comes to. Like, they need to hear it from everybody else because they hear it from me every day. They all hear it from me every day.
One last comment on this.
We're not enabling them to stay outside.
For about a half hour now. He's probably got a thing on me.
Thank you.
It's the last comment, then we'll take a vote.
Uh, thank you, uh, appreciate the opportunity to give the last comment. Uh, I wholeheartedly agreed with, uh, with Mark about the walking the beat. I think that's a good opportunity to engage the community and to see, you know, firsthand what it is that, you know, folks are dealing with. Um, the one thing that I would like some clarification on, which I'm sure the rest of the, you know, town residents here would like to, to hear about, uh, based on Councilman Dennison's proposal, is will, considering the logistics and the man-hours that would have to be dedicated to, you know, the sort of cleanup effort, if you will, uh, will our public safety officers, you know, fire, police, DPW, you know, the people are gonna have to put their face out there, considering the, the safety challenges, will they receive hazard pay? Or, you know, put in their, you know, sticking their neck out there and trying to make the situation better? Uh, I'm just curious about it. Uh, it's one of those things that, where would those, you know, tax dollars come from in order to facilitate, you know, the man-hours that would be dedicated to this effort?
Just speaking for myself.
I'm, I'm, I'm just curious.
Speaking for myself, if they would require hazard pay, they're not doing the job. Now we have to hire professionals and this is the position we've been put in. And that's not good. That further strengthens my resolve.
And I understand that, but tax dollars, our tax dollars here in the community are gonna be used one way or the other.
Correct.
And should, at, at that point, given the position that, that we're putting them into, that we're gonna ask them to put those stuffs into, shouldn't be, shouldn't they be rewarded for this efforts? They're already short-staffed as it is, I've seen the average.
You're, you're probably one hundred percent right. So why don't we hire the pros with hazmat suits and pay them a couple million dollars to come in here and clean it up? Because that's what they've left us facing.
Then we're gonna go from site to site again to do that. How about the people that made the mess clean up?
Yeah, and we've already discussed that, Wendy has put that forward, there's other members of the public that put that forward. Let's, you know, put our heads together and like, get the cleanup efforts going, but we gotta put our tax dollars to work in a more effective way than throwing people in jail, which is the.
So I'm gonna, I'm gonna make a comment of, you know, I don't know Mr. Villa is still here. But he talks about the guy who works sixteen hours a day and comes home and opens up their mail. And you know what? I forgot to pay my taxes by the end of the second quarter. I'm gonna get a late charge, correct? And I'm gonna have interest charge, right? So there's his tax dollars, right? That's, that's not fair, can he get a break? Should he get a break?
I'm not asking for, for a break, I'm just trying to understand the expenditure, like, the nature of the expenditure that's gonna happen.
Well, I think you're putting the cart before the horse here because we don't, we haven't had time to assess the damage. So yeah, it's gonna be significant, there's no doubt, it's gonna be significant. But that sixteen-hour guide day, you're looking at.
Yeah, me too.
Right, and does it make you feel better, knowing that these people are out there destroying the property that you pay for?
No, I, I don't. And I, that's why I'm trying to find a solution where we don't have to spend millions of dollars. Like I mentioned before, we're looking at an expenditure of millions, not hundreds of thousands, millions. And that's just, not even just us in the town of West Warwick, but Rhode Island residents. Because if it escalates to the point where we're incarcerated, rating folks for not having a roof over their head, we are wholly responsible for that.
And we're not doing that. We're doing that because they're destroying the town property, which they are occupying, among many other things. We're not, we're not putting people in jail because they don't have a roof over their head.
Are we?
That's not the goal.
But is that not really what?
I think it's been set up here many times tonight that if people would not destroy the property, would not create a safety risk for the residents, the first responders and themselves. For God's sake, there was somebody chasing somebody else with an axe last week.
Yeah, I'm well aware, I'm aware of the incident.
There's many more to go, to go through. We, that needs to stop. Because when that pours over into the public and into the residents of this town, what have we done except fail them?
Yeah, but we're failing now.
So we're gonna fail the twenty-nine thousand instead of the sixty?
I'm not saying we failed the twenty-nine thousand or the sixty. We say that we succeed for everyone involved and it's just gonna take a very.
All right.
So, there's no doubt it's a.
It's a difficult effort, it's gonna be expensive, we, we do, we do know that, thank you, thank you. Thank you for the time, everyone, I really appreciate it.
All right, so Mark, I know your motion was made, seconded by Jason. Can you just clarify that motion?
I'm not sure what that motion is.
That's what I mean, I just asked, can you clarify, clarify? Okay, hold on, we've had another forty-five minutes of conversation after the motion. A lot of discussion, a lot of dates, a lot of times, can you just?
Clarify.
Clarify your motion, we'll get another second and we'll take a vote.
Please. Okay, I'm gonna clarify that and put a date of December first on it. And the way, I should say rather, that will give us time to do whatever we need to do with the ordinances, to clean up the language, to do whatever we need to do and get the word out to these folks that there's a date looming. So the motion is to vacate encampments on town property on December first.
Wait on a second. I'll second it. Any other discussion from the council? Hearing none, I'm gonna take a.
Yeah, I think that that motion should include the beat, I mean, the whole thing.
Well, that's.
That, that's not what it said.
No, no, but that's, that's a separate motion. If somebody wants to put that out there, let me, let me, um, to the gentleman's point, I want to see the town as much money as possible, let's make that December second. The first is a Sunday. I'm serious.
I guess.
The first is a Sunday, December second.
So do we send the motion and make a new motion?
Well, why don't, why don't we, how about, you don't want to vacate, you want to eradicate. There, use a better word, eradicate. That's number one. Number two, there's gonna be a review and amendment of ordinances to take care of all town property. Number three, the police through Colonel Levine, town manager, are not, will produce or suggest or, uh, you know, put forth a plan of attack as it relates to this new uh, municipal court, uh, team or force, whatever you want to call it. Also, we'll add in there the advocates, uh, the needle exchange and things that were discussed and so. I, I think you're just putting together, uh, a form of outline, which suggests if you approve that, because now you're gonna have time to get it done.
I, I'm, I'm, I don't.
Okay.
I'm agreeing with you.
What he said. There's no way I'm gonna repeat all that.
Right, so my suggestion is that we're gonna put together, and you can, in order to formalize it, to make it right, we could have a special council meeting just to get the language done, so you're happy with that. And then we can work on putting everything together and then you can have your two readings.
I would have, I would feel more comfortable voting with you having, putting something together. I feel like we're kind of rushing to, uh, uh, putting something together, whether it's a special meeting, whether it's the next meeting on the first.
So I, I, I'll get what you're saying, Jay, but here's what I'm saying.
Yep.
By setting a date at December first, this doesn't fall behind the town's cracks anymore. Because it has, I mean, don't get me wrong, we have met, we have sat here, we've discussed it and discussed it and discussed it and we never took action. At least December first, we have a date of us, the town manager, whether he's meeting with the cities and leagues, towns, whoever it may be, we get together and, and we have a, we try to get a solution. But if we keep sitting here saying, ah, we'll save it for the next meeting, we'll get one, next meeting rolls around, we forget about it.
When I walked in here tonight, October first was the date in my head. And I understand that there's a lot of, there's a lot of items that, because October first is two weeks from tonight. There's a lot of items that need some cleanup, some attention. I think giving a date of December first.
Second.
Is, the second, sorry, thank you, December second is, um, it's, it's justified. We, we should push it out to December second to get everything else in order, all our ducks in a row, so to speak, and we move on.
So my suggestion, because there's six weeks now, we put together an outline, a pro forma, you take a look at it, everybody takes a look at it, whatever they want in stays in. We produce the ordinance for the first reading. How's that sound? And that way, everything that was discussed and it could be incorporated into it. And then once you guys take a look at it, you may say, well, we're gonna, we'll, we'll accept ninety percent of that for the first reading, we're not gonna put the whole thing. But that gives you a laundry list of things that were discussed tonight. So you'll, you'll be able to see it in reading and it's not gonna be done haphazardly.
And that's not December first, that's like the next meeting.
Oh, you're correct, no, no, you want everything, you want the second reading, you want the second reading prior to December second.
First.
Yes, yes.
Even before that, you have to do twenty days.
Right. For second meeting in October.
Right.
Right, because we go twenty days back from December second.
Right.
Well, like I said, you've got six weeks to get that done. So if we can get the outline to you by the end of, say, business, Wednesday, Thursday or Friday of this week, you'll be, be able to look at it over the weekend and then report back to what you want. All right. So let's, let's take one task at a time here. Mark was eradicate from town property by December second was your motion.
Correct.
Seconded by Jay. Now yours, you can bring up your motion as far as setting a.
Mending it to include.
Or do you want to set your own?
No, I.
What would be?
Well, I, I don't think that what he just said was to include all in one ordinance.
No, that's ordinance, I'm talking about the motion he made here tonight to.
That, that's what he's asking.
That's what we're doing.
That's, that's what they're talking about, isn't it? Good in my head.
The ordinance is one thing, eradicating.
No, 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 the way, the way you're going to get, again, the way you're gonna get to the conclusion, the path you're gonna get is by utilizing and or in ordinance or perhaps multiple ordinances. But right now, the way it sounded to me is that if you want to put together a West Warren homelessness issue and you're gonna resolve it in one thing, it's gonna be a brand new act, you could put everything in there you want versus having. I'm a little wary about putting everything in one ordinance, such as the committee and all that. Because as we heard, the state did that and all of a sudden, it's, it's a no-show and, you know.
We talking ordinance or we talking resolution here?
Right.
Because you made a resolution, you're talking ordinance and you're, you're right, you're wrong, because the ordinance is this.
I'm talking about, I'm talking, I'm talking about an outline.
A resolution is what he proposed here tonight, which doesn't need all that in there. It doesn't need all that legal rigmarole and, and drafts and what committees. But the, the resolution that he moved forward tonight and basically here as.
It's the placeholder, it's what's going to happen.
Discussion, action, which we've had three and a half hours of discussion with no action. And the action was him making a resolution. If you want to make a resolution.
No, if you need a resolution, I don't think that's what he said.
He made a motion, which is a resolution. Am I right, Sarah? Or am I wrong?
No. No, no.
A resolution.
He made a motion.
A resolution, guys, a resolution is an opinion of the council. You don't want a resolution, you want an ordinance that's gonna address the issue of the homeless encampments.
Putting ordinance together here tonight.
That's why.
That's why.
That it be put together.
That's why I said it's gonna, we're gonna put together an outline, a pro forma to get back to you so the ordinance can be prepared.
December second. Yes, that's, that's what he's asking for.
Okay.
Is it now?
Rephrase it now.
Honestly, I'd be fine if you just tell me to do something by a certain day and I'll do it.
I, I would suggest that's correct. That we, we direct the town manager to work with the town solicitor to make sure that an, uh, an ordinance is put forth at the next meeting and or resolution that addresses Councilman Dennison's desire to eradicate homelessness by December second.
Now it's the action we're taking.
So we're asking, we're, we're asking that the town manager and the town solicitor come back to us with the ordinance that will do that.
So we are voting on Mark to, we are voting on, on Mark not.
And Tim Williamson.
To put together something to bring back to us for, to us to make a vote.
Correct.
Okay.
Honestly, feeling like who's on first?
I think that's what it, I think that's what we do.
I agree.
The first thing I understood.
The important thing is that we do it right, right? And as the most junior person on this council, I don't wanna misstep.
But you're not gonna miss, if you're gonna get something in writing, that you're gonna be able to modify.
Correct.
Okay.
Before it gets into that first ordinance at the first reading.
Alright.
With all the motions that have been made.
Yeah.
I'm not sure where we are, but I.
So we're taking a vote.
The motion, the motion is to direct town manager and the town solicitor come back to the council at the next meeting with an ordinance.
And or resolution.
And or resolution to address.
Incorpor, incorporating the discussion that was added to tonight's meeting as it relates to the eradication of homeless encampments in the town of West Warwick.
I have a second.
In public property.
Do I have a second?
Yes.
I'm gonna take a roll call vote. Jay?
Yes.
Jason?
Yes.
Mark?
Yes.
Mary Beth?
Yes.
Can I vote? Yes.
In addition, in addition, I, I actually would like to make a motion that, that you work with the police chief and whoever else you feel is necessary to get those beats out there and in those encampments now, tomorrow.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it. Now that would be a resolution. Now, we've been talking about homeless all night. Is there any other public comment? Hearing none? I need a motion to move into executive session?
I have one thing to say in public comment. And I'll make it very quick.
Go ahead.
And the reason I'm saying it is because I was not at the last meeting. I had a personal issue I was dealing with. But I put an item on the agenda regarding Child Inc.
Oh.
And I wasn't here for that, but I'd like to state my opinion on it. Um, the reason I put that on is because I feel that Child Inc., which was a business in West Warwick, um, uh, lack of a better term, screwed us over. They, I feel they still owe us money. They were a business in town. They were a thriving business that is now operating in both Warwick and Coventry with a huge billboard. And they managed to pay all of their staff members and we took an approach, I think, as a council because we didn't want to affect the children and the parents that depended on this service. And in the end, they didn't, and after numerous attempts by our town manager, town solicitor, and our council vice president to speak with them and to, um, comes, come to some sort of a solution, whether it be a purchase or lease of the building, and of course, it's monetary because their one year, one dollar a year lease for thirty years was up. Um, they just, they decided that they didn't wanna be here anymore, which is absolutely fine. But they operated in a town building for more than a year. And I know if there's any other business in town that did that, they be put through the calls. And I just don't think that's fair. And I still think that they owe us money. And we should pursue that. So I apologize for not being here last week. I know I had it on the agenda. So that's, that's it. That's my statement.
But they never agreed to pay anything. We sent them a demand letter. There was no contract in place. It was, I don't know, and, and solicitor's not here. Um, and, and I think on top of that, we wind up with an asset worth, well, a million three, but.
It was our asset anyway.
No, it was not. The building was not.
I just still think they walked.
One of the things that was brought up, and Mark, I think, said it best, and why I kind of agreed with them, for the thirty or twenty or thirty thousand dollars they may have owed us, we're gonna be paying him two, three years of legal battle. And your end return would be twenty, thirty thousand dollars goes to the attorney and nothing comes back to the town and we still have the same thing.
And I, I do understand all that.
And I get it. I, I, I understand, but sometimes I, I gotta take a step back and look at, at the expense for the town and say, what's better? Yes, I, I, and I made it clear last meeting. I don't know if anybody's reached out to Mark, but I've had two individuals reach out to me, and I know we're still looking at it for school aspects that want to either move education back in there or another daycare, or we use it for our own education aspects. So, I don't know what's flying around, but.
I understand. And I spoke with Mark on it. I just don't, I just don't agree, but I understand. I understand. We all, we all kind of agree, you know?
Yep. It's a frustrating thing, but I don't see throwing more money after it and we don't need to pay our solicitor more money.
Right.
Yes.
And the only other thing I do have, Phoenix Square, we've talked about the sidewalk for three years now. It's getting worse and worse. Jeff and I met with, uh, State Rep Noray. Um, we discovered that the state does own it or wants us to take it over, cause they're not gonna fix it. So.
Tree coming up that one.
Yeah, so the sidewalk is, is a disaster. Uh, this, I know I've been requesting it for three years now. We've maintained everything else in this park. So just wanna point out that, you know, we, we've had benches donated. We, we cut the grass, we trim the trees, we do everything else. Though, though, they did the walkway in two thousand and six. Then, then not, they want no part of it right now.
I assume there needs to be some legal documentation. Yes.
Uh, Tom Noray sent us an email from the state of Rhode Island. Well, actually, we're all on it. Me, my, myself, Jeff. So if we can just look into that, because here we are gonna have our next tree lighting, three to four years later, sidewalk's still in disarray. So. We have a tree. It was donated by, um, David Hoarder, and he's down there daily watering it, feeding it, giving it its little nutrients. Let's hope the fifth one survives.
Yeah.
That's all I got to say on that one, too. Any other public comment before we move into executive session? Thank you for everything.
Oh.
Well, you left and go home, and then you jump on?
Guy, I had to get off. I couldn't sit no more. Um, Derek Reed sixty-two hundred Zev, I'm one step to my bed now. Um.
We didn't see that.
Yeah.
I just wanted to come on in tonight and I didn't get to while I was there, but I had the opportunity to work with the Poxon Recreation guys up at the, uh, Civic Center last week. I, I gotta say, those boys that are working with Poxon Recs are unbelievable workers. They worked really hard. They asked for advice. They asked for ways of doing things. They they really earned their money, their hourly rate, whatever you wanna call it. And in my opinion, I just wanted, you know, I think you guys should amend them. Uh, sometimes when the big boss says something to them and appreciates what they're doing, it'll make them go to the second level, but they're, they're, they're pretty young. And there was, and David, I talked to you about that youngest one there. I mean, he is, he is worth keeping. So I don't know how you guys figure that out, but those guys, those guys really earned what they did. And, uh, it was a pleasure working with them.
I just wanna point out, I know a few months ago, that area was brought up and talked about on what disarray it was, um, leading up to, uh, Mark and, uh, leading up to the memorial. So that, over the past three to four weeks, I wanna thank KC Concrete, which is Kevin Carrier and his staff, Reed's Landscaping and their staff, the town employees, Poxon Rec, everybody who got that done. If you go up there and.
Grass was donated.
And the grass was donated by.
Todd Co.
Todd Co. So everybody who made that happen, um, I know the irrigation company, I, I know I'm missing people, but I know the, towards the end, I know Mary Beth and I actually bumped into each other up there and um, the end result came out nice. And if you wanna take a ride up there, take a look at it. It, it's a good entryway into the memorial. And I know, Mark, that touches you near and dear, but that spot is definitely beautified. And, and now we're just gonna look at a couple other little things that me and Mary Beth pointed out about some of the buildings, but you know, I know Laurie's looking at that. And, um, it's such a nice area.
So Dave, if, if I may, I did have the opportunity to go up there today. Um.
Didn't need to stump you, by the way.
No, that's okay. Mary Beth just looked the other way when she saw me. No, I, I.
Blame her.
I, I did go up there today, um, because I figured this might come up tonight. And I wanted to make sure that I, I was able to take it in. And I will echo, um, the sentiments that it's, it's a marvelous place. Um, everybody involved, um, from the town side, from the other, uh, contractors or vendors that participated did a fantastic job. From my perspective, I, I couldn't be happier. I think it's a, it's a great job by everybody. I know a few meetings ago, I, I raised some questions about what we were spending the money on. Um, looking at it today, I think it was money well spent. And I think, um, it's just another point of pride for the town. I think as the winter approaches and those buildings get a lot more use with basketball games and or soccer, obviously hockey and figure skating and, and those sports, I think that's gonna get a lot of attention and there's gonna be a lot of buzz. And it's, it speaks to the things that I think we all want West Warwick to be, which is a place that's to be talked about in a good way. So I appreciate everything that was done up there, um, not only as a town council, but as a resident and obviously Matthew's dad. Um, that, that's a tremendous job by all involved. So thank you.
Hmm. If you get a chance to go and look at it, it, it's, um, it's a, a great place. So, thanks to everybody that helped out.
Just make sure you people commend Jay and his crew because they, they were, they were, they were lights out.
I actually, I know I, I was able to take a walk. I, I met, uh, Mr. Gravie and Liam and the other gentleman that was with him. I went over and shook their hands and thanked them because I know they were also put on a spot because they had a lot of extra sod. And they ended up doing a lot more work than what was anticipated, cause they ended up doing front of the Civic Center, the front of the ice rink, and wherever else they could lay sod. So, um, excellent job to everybody who got it done and the donations and whatever else. And Mark, I'm sure you'll be sending us a breakdown of everything eventually. So, once we get that, we'll be good.
You should probably do official thank yous to people, too.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Uh, I think there was something in my mailbox today. I haven't opened it yet. I don't know what's for it. They either wanna repo my lot or they wanna say thank you, one of the two.
Never know.
Alright, have a good night.
Have a good night.
Thank you.
Any other public comment? We're going into executive session.
You're ready? You sure?
Yeah. Am I make a motion to move into executive session?
Second.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.